The recording clerk via Zoom in the event that a connection is lost at any time during the meeting, a device being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else who present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to.
Thank you, Dick. While we're conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. It does not look like we have any minutes. Are there any, Marshall?
I do not have any.
Okay. So, welcome to everyone who took the time to attend here. It seems like we have a lot of participants today. And hello, Kevin.
Hi.
So, we'll start off with the first item, which is the fiscal year 2022 budget. Can I turn it over to you?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, similar to last year, but obviously a little bit different because we're not able to meet in person. I feel it's really important to allow the select board to hear directly from the department heads on these submitted budgets for each of their departments. And so, we've put together for this Thursday, next Thursday, and the following Thursday, a schedule for the different department heads to appear and present their budgets to you folks and kind of walk you through what's in there, any changes that might be occurring, anything additionally that might be an ask, and then, obviously, any questions or concerns to be able to have the discussion on that as well. And so, today, we have our finance team, our Concom and our Board of Health, as well as the Council on Aging, budgets to review. The finance team includes the accounting office, treasurer and collector's office, and the assessor's office, and the clerk's office as well is going to be presenting today. And then, just a preview for next week, we have the planning and zoning budgets, the inspectional services, the highway, snow, park, ice and parks, snow and ice, parks and cemetery, recreation, water department, stormwater and tree warden. And then, the last Thursday of the month, on the 28th, we'll have the library, police department, fire department. So, with that all being said, the budget that we'll be working off of for the discussion today is the version one, which was sent out last week, which is on board docs for anybody who would like to follow along.
Kevin, could I ask just one question before our first department head comes up? It looks like the fiscal year 21, year-to-date expenses through December look really low. So, this is obviously just half a year, so we should be adding another half a year as far as expected expenditures?
Yes and no. So, in general, that's a good way to look at it. It is a lower amount because it's a six-month snapshot of what the actuals have been. But some of the accounts are seasonal or dependent on, say, a particular event like a flu vaccination or something like that. So, yeah, some of these accounts, you can annualize them. Some of them, I would say, it depends.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just another big thank you as we head into the accountant's budget to Catherine, who not only will be talking about her individual budget, but as everyone knows, poured herself over the last couple of months into preparation and pulling all the details together to have the presentation that we have today and going forward available to you all. So, thank you, Catherine, for that.
Thank you, Catherine.
So, that all being said.
That's a big job. Thank you, Catherine.
Lot of late nights texting back and forth, make sure everything was where it needed to be. So, that all being said, Catherine, if you want to maybe walk the select board through your budget, starting with salaries and wages and then moving down to your other category.
I'm not sure Catherine can hear. Can she? Can you hear us, Catherine? I don't think she can. Is there anyone else there who could run down and check and see if she's having difficulty?
I'm next door. I'll do it real quick. One-minute break.
Looks like she's busy working on the budget.
Certainly convenient within physical distance.
I was gonna tell you, we're gonna know when Kevin gets there.
She's gonna look up.
Look up. Apparently not. Maybe she was frozen. Yeah, I don't see her now. David Larson, hello.
So, just some small technical difficulties. So, if it's okay with the board, we'll move on to the next person on the agenda to kick us off. And that is the treasurer's office, Jackie. Hi, Jackie.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jackie.
So, would you like me to start with the salary piece and go from there? Is that good for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. So, obviously, for the salary numbers, we calculated that based on the directive for the 2% no-step increase, only the 2%. And the only change in that section, you'll see a reduction of $750. That was, it was in last year. I think it was in by error, and so that was taken out. And the other three lines are just for the increases for the salaries in my department. And if there's no questions there, I'll move to the next section for the expenditures for the treasurer collector. And that, again, there were no changes. Postage is actually going up on the 24th. It's a minimal increase, so we should have enough in that appropriation even without increasing it. I mean, obviously, it fluctuates a little bit based on the mailings. That includes our tax bill mailings and mailings for vendor checks and things of that nature. So, I mean, it could potentially go up, but I think it'll still be fine with that budgeted number. And even though there is an increase, I didn't need to increase the appropriation. In the other lines, there's really nothing out of the ordinary. Everything is still the same, so I didn't need to make any changes.
Great. So, Jackie, just on that subject of postage, if we went back and looked at the actuals, for example, in 19 and 20, 18, 19, and 20, they work considerably less. And is there a particular reason why it is as high as it is? Is there some expectation that you'll have a sudden requirement for more postage?
I mean, well, other than, you know, the increase, that's why, so I didn't increase the appropriation because I felt as though that the amount that was there will be absorbed within that number, even though the postage rates are going up. We are charged for each mailing through our vendor, Kelly and Ryan. So, if we have collections, say, for example, on our excise commitment, that the bills are not paid, that will in turn generate more demand notices, and that all comes out of that line. So, I mean, if we have a slow collection period, then it, you know, it increases our mailing on that end with the deputy collector. So, that's why I didn't want to lower it too much.
It's just that the actuals back 18, 19, and 20 were 13, 12, and 13, 14, I guess, 13, 12, 14 in that category. So, yeah, okay. It would seem like there's certainly a lot there. Good.
Jackie, can I ask you, similar to the question I mentioned to Kevin about if we look at the actuals through the end of the year, not all of them can be annualized by just doubling, but a number of these seem super low for actuals, and yet, we're going back to a higher amount in the budget for '22. Office supplies is only at 490 right now, and we're asking for almost 3,000. Forms is at 400. We're asking for 3,400. Does it surge towards the end of the year, the final six months?
Well, some, I mean, for example, the line that you pointed out with the forms that we do, that we order them at certain times during the year. So, for example, we have just ordered our W2s and 1099s in our year-end reporting. So, those come in. Another reason that I would suggest that some of the expenditures seem lower is because of the freeze. So, we've really not been doing a lot of purchasing, in particular for office supplies. I mean, there's certainly some things that we're in need of, but we've kind of just held back. And if it's something that's extraordinary and really necessary, then we go through the channels with Donner and Kevin to get the approval and order it. But other than that, we've been holding off to honor the spending freeze.
So, and that'll be a theme you'll see throughout the budget. The spending freeze purposely has delayed necessary purchases that typically might have been purchased earlier on, or in some cases, we're able to reduce the cost overall. But that, you'll see in a number of places in general that there's a, it will be a greater than a 50% reduction in the line item.
Does the freeze impact deputy collector fees in any way? Because that looks to be like 2,700, and the budget is over 10,000.
That, no, that does not affect the freeze. We actually, those numbers will go up. We're doing our biggest commitment for excise will be going out shortly. We just got the files yesterday. So, that's quite a big commitment for the excise bill. So, once those go out and after the first 30 days they're not paid, we'll see an increase there with the deputy collector because they basically act as our collecting agent for those types of bills. So, that will definitely surge in the next upcoming months.
On the previous question where because of the spending freeze, you're not close to the, with the annual expected number, do you expect that in the second half of this fiscal year, you're going to catch up, or will you underdeliver on the year ultimately? Or is that too general a question, and it varies wildly depending on category?
Yeah, I mean, I think in some categories, as Kevin mentioned, that freeze, I think, is staying in place as far as I know. So, for example, in the office supplies, it will only be, you know, what's absolutely mandatory for us to purchase. We're trying to get by, you know, without doing that. So, I would think in a line like that, you know, we won't see that that will increase a tremendous amount. Some others, obviously, you know, the postage still continues on. I mean, we still have to mail out the vendor checks and things of that nature. So, I think those will be ongoing. But I think at the end of the fiscal year, we will see that our expenditures will still be low.
Okay.
And can I just ask, what is tax title legal services? What titles are we looking into?
So, that is, that's regarding the delinquent taxes for real estate. So, if someone does not pay their tax bill after the full fiscal year, then we pursue collections by mean of lien on the property. And what's involved with that is we do several mailings to try to reach out to the property owner to seek collection. If they still do not pay their bill, then we file a document with the registry of deeds. And by doing that, that secures our right as a town to collect the taxes, whether there's a refinance or a sale. It's a recorded document, so it's in the interest of the town to do that. So, there's fees associated with that. And furthermore, if we pursue beyond the lien and the tax title process, which could result in foreclosure, that line would allow us to pay our attorney to pursue those in land court.
Is that 11,000 about what we've experienced the past couple of years, Jackie?
It is. Last year, I didn't send any to land court because I had only been here for six months, and we were catching up on the tax title processing. So, we just finished the fiscal '20. So, I would expect by the end of this year, we'll have some cases that we'll be able to forge forward to the attorney.
Thank you.
Jackie, do we want to maybe go to the other categories that you budgeted for, such as debt service and others?
Of course.
Unless there's any further questions. Sorry, I didn't mean to stop the conversation. Jackie's done a really good job managing her budget this year, obviously, and within guidelines with the 0% on the other category as well for the submission, so.
Yeah, that looks like you've done a great job, Jackie.
Oh, thank you. So, the next section, if we would like to go to the debt service, obviously, there's really no room for any type of negotiation here. I mean, the numbers are just determined by the debt service schedules. So, as you can see, the top is the principal payments that are scheduled, and then the bottom section is for the associated interest payments. So, fortunately, overall, the debt service total has come down a little bit over last year's. But other than that, it's fairly straightforward. And if there's no questions on debt, we can go to my last section for the benefits.
But for those listening, just to clarify that, as you said, it went down, which is great, debt service went down, but out of 1,300,000, it went down about $60,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, on the last section, which is the employee benefits section, basically, there are increases only. Everything else has stayed the same. And the three big increases, you'll see the first one, of course, is the Essex County retirement appropriation. And that is dictated, you know, obviously, by the system that we're in. PERC sends us the notice as to what our appropriation is for the year, based on the assessments that they do for all the communities that are part of the system. That number that is listed as the proposed number is the town taking advantage of the discount if we pay the full appropriation by July 1st. If we opt not to do that, we lose our ability to take advantage of the discount, and we can pay it in two equal payments, one at July 1st and then one halfway through the year. So, this number reflected here is the reduced amount, assuming that we take advantage of that discount.
We know that as a collector, you know you can get the cash to be able to pay that at the beginning. Nice going.
Yes. Thank you. So, the next increase is for the Maya Health benefits. That is only an estimate. I did have a conference call in November with a rep from Maya, and the rates have not been determined yet. They're still doing their analysis. So, he suggested, you know, worst-case scenario could potentially be 7% to 8% increase. It may not be that. However, that's the number I put in just based on that conversation. So, he's hoping to get back to us probably early, maybe March, late February, early March with the actual rates. So, at that point, that number obviously could change, but that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that something was included in case it does fall with that the highest increase.
And last year, Jackie, was it zero? Was it zero last year?
Yes.
So, that's a kind of a big jump from 0% to 7%. Did they say why?
He actually was a little bit reluctant to give a lot of information. They do their analysis based on claim activity and those types of things. And with COVID, it was a very different year for them because so many individuals weren't going to their follow-up appointments and weren't seeking treatment as they probably should have. So, the claim volume, from what he said, was very low. So, he just really, at this point, for budgetary purposes, is suggesting to the members of Maya to base it on the highest percentage that he believes is possible. I mean, I think in past years, it could even be higher, but he thought that was a good number to use between the 7% and 8%.
Jackie, when do we typically have that number more firmed up?
Usually, end of February, early March.
But actually, at MMA next week, they typically, Maya typically gives us guidance, updated guidance on what they expect will be the increase in general, not necessarily by individual towns. So, hopefully, we'll have more information even tomorrow unless this is the same information. But usually, they wait until the MMA and announce it as part of Maya's portion of the MMA.
So, yes, so hopefully, as soon as I hear anything, obviously, I'll be happy to share it with everyone. And I am hopeful that it won't be this much of an increase, but I did want to include that just in case.
That's what they told you. That's what we should put in. But they may change it even next week, as I said.
Okay, good. So, then, my last line with the increase is for the Medicare tax. And that is, again, just an estimate based on the no-step increases, which was the directive. So, it's based on the 2% increase in general across the board. So, in line with the salaries going up, then the Medicare tax in association with it also goes up. So, that's the reason for that increase.
Jackie, I don't see that. It says 0%. Am I looking at the wrong thing?
Oh, my apologies. That, I actually mentioned to Catherine, I'm looking at my copy, that's why, that was put on the wrong line in your version of the budget, I believe. I think it was on the line below. It should be $4,200.
Okay, that explains the next question then about the fees going up 100%.
Yeah, exactly. So, that, yeah, so that should actually be zero. So, the 4,200 belongs in the Medicare line, and the remaining is zero.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I was looking at my copy.
No problem.
So, that's all I have. Did anyone have any questions for me?
Just going back for a second on the debt, I assume that 58,000 reduction involves the notes that we just passed that you got us for reduced interest?
It actually does not. This portion of the debt is for the general fund, so that will be reflected in the water department's budget. They report their own debt, and with that self-supporting, yeah, they'll recognize those savings there.
Yep, missed that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jackie, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
And thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Catherine, thumbs up if you can hear it.
Yeah. Sorry, I had a weak internet connection. So, the accountant's budget is brief. I have two asks this year. The first one is for an increase in the assistant town accountant hours from 34 to 40 hours. This is the third year that I'm making this request. The current position at 34 hours for the assistant town accountant, in my opinion, is just not adequate to meet the needs of the office. I'm making the request that the comment says basically the same thing that I had last year, is that the town accountant has been given increased financial and management responsibilities over the past five years. Several specific and detailed responsibilities that are shared task of the town accountant and the assistant town accountant are more and more being diverted solely to the assistant town accountant. And I feel that the additional hours are absolutely necessary to meet the needs of the office. Just to give you some numbers with that, I just did a quick review in terms of the invoices that are being processed. Processing the warrant is a major job responsibility of the assistant town accountant position. And processing is beyond entering the invoices. It's also checking each and every invoice in terms of what it is and how it's being paid, from which account. There's a lot of detail that goes into entering it into the financial software system. But in July, we had 717 bills, invoices. August, 556. September, 511. October, 874. November, 561. And December, 639. So, in the first six months of the year, basically paid over 3,800 bills, which is more than your 12 to 15 bills that you pay at home each month. The office is driven by deadlines, is basically what we have all the time, that we have bill warrants that must be completed each week by Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Revenue processed weekly, reconciliation monthly. Accounts need to be set up prior to bills and payroll warrants being paid. The state has a calendar of financial reporting deadlines, which if they're not met, has a financial, a negative financial impact on the town. We have five annual reports required by the state that drive how we conduct our daily business every day within the office. A lot of those forms and reports are familiar to you, the tax recap, the balance sheet, Schedule A, the free cash certification and fixed assets. And additionally, there's three other reports that reflect how we're doing in terms of the town, and those are the bond rating, the annual audit, which is the town's financial statements in the annual report. So, I'm basically asking for these hours. I do feel they're necessary currently. You know, the hours are arriving to work early, working through lunch, and continuing to work after normal deadline, after normal timelines. Weekends serve as a time to catch up, and Sunday night's a chance to get ahead of emails. And I just, I feel that it's justified to have the six hours in the office. In terms of what the assistant town accountant position is, it's beyond a clerical role. It's a professional position. It's a position that requires complex calculation. It requires the ability to reconcile and monitor a multitude of accounts. It's a position that's involved with the audit and preparation of these, of the reports that I've mentioned, and above all else, it requires a lot of attention to detail. I don't know what else I can tell you on it unless you have any questions about that position.
Catherine, that was really thorough, just for the board's purposes, too, just from thinking outside just the department itself as well. Catherine talked about, you know, how the operations work and why the request is in there. And if it is approved through the process for the additional hours, the current assistant town accountant does six hours at the fire department. And historically, it'd been a split at the fire department with the administrative hours. Another department, Diane Rizza, was formerly taking the other hours, nine hours, and Sue was taking the six. So, Sue's doing 40 hours now, but just splitting between departments. Diane gave her notice on the fire department a handful of months ago, and we decided not to fill that position, the administrative, which has put an extra burden on the chief, obviously. But because of the hiring freeze, spending freeze, and we saw this as an opportunity coming into this budget cycle to try to, if Sue's hours moved, then we could hire somebody one time at that 15 hours who could be dedicated to the fire department in their responsibility. So, there is a residual impact to the hours going to the accounting office, in addition to all the reasons directly related to the department itself.
So, Sue Lemese is the assistant town accountant. She's been in the position here for three years, although she's been working for the town for well over 20 years at this point. I'll just tell you, I mean, she's someone that I find she's analytical. She has the attention to detail that I need. She's intelligent. She genuinely cares about the town, and maybe it's because she's also a long-term resident, and she's someone I respect and trust in the position.
So, Kevin.
We know Sue works well, and all of us can see exactly what we know.
The hours, I would say, you know, everyone knows Sue's a great employee. Just looking at the need for the additional six hours, it sounds like, Catherine, that it's not that there's additional work that Sue is doing. It was that it was previously done by you and Sue, but now you have to offload it to Sue because additional work or projects have been given to you? Is that correct?
Well, it's partly that. It's also, you know, I'm also working around the clock, and I've talked to Kevin about this, and I'm tired of it. It becomes consuming.
So, this may not solve the problem in the next few months, but one of the things that we've talked about is the use of software. And Munis, for example, has the customer self-serve, one of which is the vendor processing. Kevin, do you have some thoughts on that?
He just went off a minute.
I do. I was taking my jacket. Sorry. No, I think one of the things that we've been talking about, we being Catherine and the finance team, which is made up of Tula, our assessor, as well as Jackie, is the expansion of the Munis to a department level. Right now, a lot of it's centralized, as we know, and we're coming up with a strategy to allow more on-the-ground, in-the-department ability to use that software. So, yes, that is something we have, we talked about, I think, most recently is Monday at our finance team meeting, as something that we want to continue to pursue.
If we wanted to, how soon could we implement it? And if we did, how much would it help us in the processing? And if we did, how much would it help us in the processing of those 500-some-odd monthly, months of invoices?
So right now, our next meeting is, uh, November, I'm sorry, February 3rd. Um, and there, there's, when we do the transition, the steps in the process will be, um, playing on who will should and, and who will be given certain department accesses, the permissions, reviewing overall of the permissions in general from the department, uh, from a security standpoint and an access standpoint. Make sure the computers that everyone has, the software is, is compatible to use the Munis product. Training the personnel is a really key component of that as well. Um, so we need to have a standard that we can provide everybody. And then it potentially go live. We see this as a department-by-department process, not in all at once. Um, we think some of the initial training will be done at once, but then we'll start working at each so we can give that, um, very concentrated, uh, attention to it to ensure its success in, in the rollout. Um, and I think, I think the question was how, how soon can we start doing it? So the third, we're coming back together. There's a couple of action items that we had at our last meeting Monday, um, that, that we'll be coming back to over the next few, over the next few weeks, um, assessing where we are. And then at that point, I, I think the plan will be to actually put on the schedule, um, implementation of the steps I, I, I referenced it a second ago. So it could be a number of months. It, it, a lot of it comes down to, um, capacity too, to take this on. Uh, we, we started talking about this a few months ago and we realized with the CARES money and a lot of other unexpected COVID in general, and a lot of other unexpected items that came up, to do it right, it really meant to push it off, um, a little bit so that we can get everyone to, to be in a good place to, to roll it out successfully. So, um, that's our tentative schedule is to regroup on, uh, in a few weeks, lay out a more, a little, a little bit more detailed schedule for an implementation. We, we've targeted the library as, as a logical first department to take it on. They've shown an interest in the past. Um, and so we'll come up with, but before we can go to them, we need to have that consistent, um, model game plan of how we roll it out at each department. And that's what we're working on right now.
But it would be, it would be very helpful. It wouldn't eliminate the, the role and responsibility of what the town, the assistant town accountant does, but it would be very helpful, um, in terms of stopping some of the, um, you know, the constant stopping while doing the work to pull reports for people. They'd be able to have access to their accounts. Um, we've been talking about it now for about two years. I, I see the future of this. If we, you know, with the fiber optics, I think that we're in a place that likely, I'd say in two years, we could be at a place that we're fully operating with a, a more, you know, departments more fully using the Munis.
I would, I would suggest that, um, Catherine has been talking about this for two or three years. And, uh, and, and, and it's the same story. Uh, she's overworked. It's getting, not going to get any better, I'm sure, because I'm sure the job is going to get bigger year to year to year. And quite frankly, the amount of money is not that big a deal. And I realize that if we add all those little pieces together, we wind up with one big piece. But, uh, uh, and we need to be diligent about that. But, uh, this has been talked about for two or three years.
Catherine, do you want to speak to the other piece, the audit service?
Yeah. So this is a, um, a basically a one-time request at this point. It's, it's a, what, because when you have, when a non-federal entity such as a municipal government expends more than 750,000 in federal funds in a year, we need to have what's called a single audit. Um, it, it was previously known as OMB Circular A133. It's now just referred to as the single audit, but some people know it as the 133 audit. Um, and it's, the cost, the, the current, um, financial auditor who does our financial statements would do this single audit. The cost is between $5,000 and $10,000, depending on the different types of funding that comes in. Um, we don't usually have a single audit. We do get federal funds, but they don't come anywhere near the 750. But just with the CARES money alone, that's in, in this fiscal year, fiscal '21, about, um, I think 400 or 550,000 has been spent just from CARES. And then you add a couple hundred from the, from the school department. Both the fire and the police have gotten some Department of Justice, that's, that's federal money. Um, I, I, I believe we're going to exceed 750,000 in expenditures. So it's intended to provide assurance that local governments like Topsfield have the adequate internal controls in place and that they're complying with the program requirements.
In some ways, the, the question might be, and I have to be careful because I'm speaking for the other, for the other group here. But, uh, to what extent we quote anticipate this, uh, or, or not? If we're really strong on the fact that we're going to hit that 750, then we got to put it in. But if we're really questionable about how much, you know, I don't, I'm sure we're really going to get there. We ought to talk with the FinCom, I think, and ask them if they would be willing to consider that as an unanticipated if we wind up going over that. Because, um, it's pretty close to the line. And therefore, they would transfer the 5,000 to 10,000 if necessary from the reserve fund that they have. I think it's worth it to talk with them about it if you feel that it's really that close to the line and we may be under the line, maybe over the line.
I, I think that, um, it could be done as a, as a reserve fund transfer. There's no question about that. Uh, and in fact, if we needed it for FY '20, um, that would have been, which is be, that audit's being done in FY '21. So it's the FY '21 expenditures go, that, that's why the request is being asked for FY '22. Um, but we looked at it in terms of would we need it for this audit, the FY '20 audit? And the answer was no, we were just below, not just below, we were more below. For the FY '21 audit, which occurs in FY '22, um, we will have to have it. I did talk to, um, Dick Kingston, our financial auditor, uh, who quickly did the math as well. Um, but it could be funded as a reserve fund transfer because it's a one-time thing. Um.
Well, not, not if, not if we're really sure that, that we're going to go over. I mean, if we're really sure, then it's not unanticipated. And so I wouldn't ask them to do that. But the, the thought I had is if, if we think that, oh, we think we're going to be maybe 650 to 700, but just in case, you know, there's a chance that we're going to go over 750, then I would talk with them about it. But if you're confident that we're going to go over the 750, then we, we shouldn't do it as unanticipated. I'm sorry. I agree. We wouldn't do that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the audit? Rich sounds required.
And, and with the audit, Catherine, I mean, those federal funds, a lot of it, was that driven this year by CARES and other, other fundings?
Well, there's the CARES that, that we got. The school has, um, like the, their Title I programs of, uh, federal funds. Um, the, the school also got CARES money. Um, the police and fire both have gotten, um, decent amounts of federal funds from the Department of Justice. Um, so there's, there's, it's a, it's a multiple sources, but CARES was the highest number.
I was leading it to just saying a big kudos to the, to everybody on the team for those grants that they were able to source this year, both chiefs and others, um, in, in, in expending those CARES funds as well. Um, it was a big team effort. So just a nod to everybody on that. Thank you, Cap.
Are any funds remaining out of all those CARES that would cover the audit?
No, and I don't think it would be an eligible item, um, only because it.
Good question.
There is a residual impact for it, uh, because it was part of the, that got us to the number. But they've been pretty tight with it, meaning to be a, a, a pretty close correlation and something, I think, tangible mass, equip PPE, infrastructure, things of that nature. So it's a good question.
Yeah, it's a little catch 22. It's like, we have to spend this 10,000 because we got CARES money, but they won't let us spend the CARES money to do what they require because we got CARES money.
And we, we, kudos to the team as well. And Donna's on this call, so a nod to Donna Rich as well for, and many others for helping us get to the, um, the finish line, um, under the original rules that said spend the money by the end of the calendar year. Um, and we did. And not, not many other communities can say they were able to accomplish that. So, um, Donna, thank you. And, and many others on this call for helping us get there.
Johnny, agreed at spending money.
Um, Catherine, do we want to go towards the end and talk about some of the, um, some of those other accounts that, that you've been working on, that we've been working on?
Uh, in terms of like the unemployment?
Yeah.
Um, well, I mean, there's some, there's some requests in there in terms of the annual, the annual items for, you, once again, we looked at the balances, just pulling to it. Uh, in the unemployment fund, the compensated abstances, and the police and fire special identity funds. Um, and.
Other, is this the other over guideline one that you're talking about?
This is over guidelines.
Which number are you talking about?
42, 43, and 44 of the over guidelines. Um, and it, it's just, you know, the, the explanation there just shows like for unemployment, the current balance is, is roughly $10,000 and $21,000's been spent in FY '21. And, um, I actually asked Jackie, and her, her department provided an analysis for FY '22. And based on what the, what is currently the run on the unemployment, um, the 40, we actually started with 20,000 and we went up to 40, um, because I believe that that's going to be needed for FY '22. Um, compensated abstances, that when this fund was, was first set up, we were kind of keeping a, a $100,000 balance. Um, so this is with 43,000 in it this year, we're, we're asking for 60,000. And then currently with the police identity, there's, there is at least one person who is on, um, leave for an injury that, um, we're looking to make sure that we have the funds in that, in that, in that fund.
And we did an analysis on the, um, the, the compensated abstances. Um, and we, we have at least five people we know who, uh, have spoken about the possibility of retiring, two for, we know for certain, um, and there's a couple of others eligible. So that, that number, that, that 100,000 is actually, it's a good number to, to make sure we have what we need to, to cover those costs potentially.
The 100,000, the 60 plus the 40?
Yes, the total.
Okay. Wow.
We're hoping it won't be as much.
You've run the numbers though. Thank you. You've run the numbers on the number of six days and how much the.
We did an analysis of, of, of age and, and where they are in the retirement and got a sense for who might be maxing out. Um, we've also had people who've provided some indications that they, they, they're either saying this is when I'm retiring or they've, they've indicated that, you know, sometime over the next year, I might, I might make that life decision and, and retire. So, um, yeah, we, there's, there was some, we pulled all the, uh, treasurer's office pulled all the, the, the numbers for us and we were able to, based on this coming year's, um, rates for, for payments, we were able to back into the numbers for each of those potentially ahead of time. An estimate could vary depending on if they use time, but, um, we got, we got in the weeds a little bit with it.
Okay. Anything else in Catherine's group? To cover Kevin?
I think Catherine, is that it? Is that, is that good for your, uh?
All right. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. So the next one is our wonderful assessor, Tula, who happened, I think you might have stepped away for a moment. Um, she's back. All right. Tula, just in time.
Hey, my turn?
It is, yeah. So, um.
I took a minute just to, um, I don't know if it was my turn, just in case it takes long.
Nope, it was perfect timing. Um, so I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I've never done this before. And, um, I'm not sure, um, so if I start with salary, um, I, we just used the 2% that was, um, that was given to us. That's the increase in the salary. Um, nothing dramatic there. Um, in the others, there is no change, um, on what was there based on last year's 0% increase, except that, um, I, the, um, the support for the Patriot software and the license has now been put into my budget. That's that $7,600. So we came back to the select board's budget and it's now in mine. Um, what I'm doing, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Tula, I'm just real quick on that one, just because it's a more broad conversation for the budget this year. Um, this is the first one you'll see, but there's a few others. Beth will be talking about hers in a minute as well. Um, but we had, um, an IT, uh, software account under the, um, the town hall budget, which, um, we had an itemized list that was, that we used to get to those numbers. But for the software, we identified to be specifically used by a department. Um, we reapplied those into those departments and netted that dollar amount out of, um, or, out of the town, uh, town hall budget. So, um, purpose behind is we, we want to be as transparent as possible. And if it's, there is other software still in our, our town hall budget, but those are pieces of software like, um, emails or, or something like that where it's, it's universal and not just one department related. Sorry to interrupt you, Tula. Thank you.
Not at all. Um, the, the one change that I'm making, um, is, is not an increase. It's actually, um, taking funds out of one account and putting it, putting it, putting it into another. So from the advertising account, we used to be required to, um, put an ad in the paper, um, during certification or for the classification hearing, which is no longer, um, I think this year was the first year, they told us we don't have to do that. We can post on the website and in office. So I'm taking that out of that account and putting it into phone communications. I now have an iPad and I need the data to be able to work with it in the field. And I have to say, having this iPad out in the field is just wonderful. Um, I use it primarily for, um, building permit inspections. So this way, once I'm done, I can pull up the plans while I'm there and I, um, I pass the inspection so Diane knows she can schedule a blend. So that worked wonderfully. So, um, I'm just switching that up. Um, so as, as far as, um, what hasn't been spent yet, I will tell you that, um, the majority will be spent because it's kind of specific. What you will not see, um, if the spending freeze stays in effect, our office supply, I do have, um, something going in to get paid, uh, now. But, um, the office supply will be done. We are doing the best we can, unless it's absolutely necessary. We need labels or envelopes, archival paper, but we're pretty much just barebone and working with it. The travel expense will be reduced as well this year. Um, as far as attending conferences and stuff like that, that's not going to happen this year with COVID. Um, so that's where we are with that. Um, that's all I have. Um, I will be asking for an increase of $5,000 for utility companies appraisal. So what that is, is personal property. Um, the utility companies are a unique, um, account. It's not, you know, typically your personal property account is, um, the restaurant. They pay personal property on their equipment, the tables, the chairs, um, things like that. Um, here, why did everybody leave? I can't see anybody.
Number four and the other?
Uh, where is my other?
$5,000.
I was, it, all my papers got mixed up. I had Mike break before you guys. Uh, so it's number three?
5,000 under other consulting and ATB?
Correct. Right. So, so the way that we, um, so the, like I said, utility companies are unique. Those are Mass, Mass Electric and Boston Gas. So right now, the DOR gives us the values for things like Verizon, telecommunication, because they are unique as far as personal property accounts go. The utility companies were left to the assessors because they used, we used to assess them by net book value. So basically, that was the utility companies telling us what they were worth. Um, the DOR now changed their requirement and we are now required to use what's called the 50/50 blend. They want us to use reproduction cost, new, less depreciation. Um, and we can use 50% of that and 50% of the net book value. Um, this, uh, like I said, is unique. Mass Electric is huge. Boston Gas is huge that even our consultants that, um, help with the personal property won't touch it. Um, they will be requiring that we submit an appraisal backing up our number. They will be requiring that we submit an appraisal backing up our numbers, all the documentations from the appraisal in order for them to approve our values. So it's actually a requirement. I don't know what else to tell you. Basically, when we were, when we were using the net book value, that was tied into the Department of Utility, I think that's what they're called, their rates. They, their, their rates were regulated. So when a company sold to another company, it was regulated. Now, I think it was like 1993 or sometime in the nineties, they changed that rate regulation. And, and so the DOR feels that because of that, we could achieve more value. So what I've done is, so we have two. It will cost us 2,500 for each utility, which is why I'm asking for the 5,000. What I've done is, so they've been talking about this for two years and at our conferences, workshops, and the assessors have tried to talk the DOR out of it because we know that it's going to cost a lot of money for the, it was going to cost a lot of money. They were talking 5,000, $6,000 for each utility company. And we were all up in arms about it. What they did is last, the utility companies themselves said, so now the information that's going to be requested from them, actually, there is a document from the DOR that's pages and pages of worksheets. So the utility company said, okay, we need another year to do this. We have to, software, we need to be able to give you the information that you're asking. We need another year. So last year was recommended that we use this method unless you were in a certification year, which we were not. We are in an interim year. So I didn't use it. However, for fiscal 2022, we are all required to do it. There is no, you know, we recommend this year that you do it. We are required to submit an appraisal with our values backing them up. What I did was I called, what called, I did a little bit of a survey in Essex County. I had three county, three municipalities that were in certification and had to do it. And what they told me is they saw good increases in their value and tax revenue. So I'll give you the three that I got. It doesn't guarantee that we're going to get it. I believe that will at least cover the cost and we'll see more revenue because it really depends on the personal property these utility companies have in our town. So Manchester by the Sea has two utility companies. They saw an increase of nine million in value, which translated to 98,910 in tax revenue. Rockport, which is a smaller town, has two as well. They saw an increase of 4,417,360, which translated into 44,600 tax dollars. And then Gloucester just gave me a percentage. They also had, have two utility companies. Mass Electric, they saw a 45% increase in value and Boston Gas, 34%. I also talked to some other towns that are out on the other side of Massachusetts, not necessarily here in Essex County, I just wanted to get a feel. And these are a lot bigger than we are. Obviously they're Taunton, Homington, huge. And they saw almost half a million dollars I have in, for Taunton and Homington in tax dollars. So this is what the DOR is telling us. You will be investing for the appraisal, but you will probably get it back two or threefold.
So Tula, it sounds like it's required. We have to do it.
It's required.
And it's going to pay for itself. How, how often do we have to do these appraisals?
Every year. This will be how going forward they will be appraised.
So you want this then as a new budget line item?
Yes, sir. Well, it'll go into my consulting and ATV account.
Or it could be kept as a separate line. Okay.
Yeah.
One of the other. So we need to do it.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question.
No, I can't wait to see what we get.
Tula's a good negotiator. I think we'll get, we'll be okay.
And thank you for doing all that legwork, Tula, to give us a sense of what it could bring in for us. That's helpful information as well.
Could we just go back and ask some questions? That 650, 650 on the iPad, that's a service fee that you're paying on that iPad? And so it's an annual fee?
No, it's, it's a monthly fee and it's the fee for, for access to data on the road. What do you call that?
On the cloud, it's in the cloud. So you.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I have internet service on my iPad.
Okay, you're paying on a monthly basis, roughly $60 a month or whatever. Okay. And it's an ongoing cost every year. Just looking at the budget, Tula, and, and the actuals, the, the actuals, for example, 18, 19 and 20 ranged 32, 27, 31, so somewhere in the order of about 30,000 is what the actuals were two, three, two years ago. So we're, we're coming, we had last year 43. I'll hold off on the 7,600. But i- in a sense, could we not absorb the 5,000 in the existing other since we have had, I, I don't necessarily, in a sense, want to cut your other budget, but we have had enough excess so that we, it would seem to me we could absorb this new additional cost of 5,000 without materially changing our, the degree of conservativeness in our budgeting for the assessor's account.
I don't know where that would come out from. You see an increase of 43,000, 43 over the 31 because I had $10,000 in my budget added for fiscal 21 to do cyclical inspections on a yearly basis as required by the DOR versus doing it in a two or three year period and just banging it out. This again was the DOR telling us they want it to be done on a, on an ongoing basis because they feel that we'll be picking up more in data rather than waiting that 10 years. So that's that increase that you're seeing. Really everything on my budget is pretty much cost.
Okay.
And within the guidelines too, 0% you're over here.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Tula? Great, thank you so much, Tula, for pulling all that together.
Thanks, Tula.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our town, our town clerk.
Good afternoon. Hi Beth. Let's see, I just flipped. Hold on a second. Okay. So looking at the omnibus, as with everyone else, the wages and salaries are within the 2%. There was a freeze on the staff. The only difference for me is that I have the election workers and that is going down this year because we only have one election in this fiscal, next coming fiscal year. However, there is a change in the minimum wage. So we did take into account the minimum wage going from 1275 up to 1350. So that's in there as well.
Meaning the reduction would have been, meaning the reduction would have been greater if.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Slightly, yeah. Absolutely. So moving down to the other, the building rental is going down because we have fewer elections. So that's why you see the negative there for the 300. And the next change is with my postage during a meeting with Kevin and Catherine, we were looking at my postage and it seems it's been creeping up in my office. So in order to stay within the guidelines, I'm putting a little bit more in postage and taking it out of the restoration and preservation. Restoration and preservation is something that I haven't honestly done much of since I've come in, come into the clerk's office. It's one of those things that's back burner. But this year I was hoping to purchase some things, some binders that are archival safe and some archival supplies for some, for the tome that we have. It's time to transition the tome from the everyday into like a, you know, a permanent binder. And so I haven't been able to do that because of the spending freeze. So reluctantly, in order to stay in the guidelines, we're going to put some more into the postage. Postage has been ratcheting up a little bit in my office because more and more people are doing their dogs online. We've, we've added vitals and dog licenses over the last few years for people to do online. And when they do that, we need to mail something out to them. This year especially, people are doing a lot more with that. And also about a year ago, the state changed the way they're registering people. They now have automatic voter registration. It's another unfunded mandate from the state. So anyone that goes to the registry or who registers for services through the Health Connector, people that qualify for the Health Connector, they automatically get enrolled as voters if they're, if they're residents, if, if they're citizens and they qualify. And that is fed to us through the state system and then we have to then send them a letter asking them, you know, you've been registered, do you want to be registered and which party do you want to be in? So that also could be part of this slight uptick in, in our postage as well.
Beth, can I ask you, when they do the dog licenses online and you have to mail them something, can you do that via email or is this the actual dog tags?
No, it's the tag. Yeah, it's the tag.
Okay. And for the preservation, that, that tome that you mentioned, do we have to keep the actual paper copy? Could it be digitized?
Even if we digitized it, which is, that's another whole thing, it, we still have to keep the permanent document. Yeah, it's a permanent document. I can't just get rid of it. We can digitize it so that people could look it up from anywhere in the world, put it on, you know, somehow link it to the website and people can look things up from anywhere in the world. But I still have to keep the permanent document.
Okay.
That's law. So it's just now that, you know, it would be nice to actually do some of those things. I mean, there's other preservation projects we probably should be doing that I, I haven't had, had the time to wrap my head around. And, you know, the thousand dollars wouldn't cover it anyway. For that, we'd have to really plan ahead and look for a grant and really dive into it. That's the way that it seems like a lot of the clerks accomplish some of those types of things. So, but really the, you know, the thousand dollars is just for the occasional permanent binder. Right now, we actually need another death binder. We've kind of filled up. And, you know, that kind of translates into my supplies too. You know, we've, it's been a big year for, for vital records as well. And, you know, I, we went through a lot of paper in the spring, a lot of the bonded, the special bonded paper that we print out vital records on, particularly death records. And so, you know, and we also, our archival ones are also going, you know, filled up a binder. So now I need another death binder too. So it's, it's, you know, it's like trickling down. But I don't know. Do you have any other questions about, about it?
Just the census expense, is that completed now for fiscal year 21? Is that thousand, everything, is census over? Or does something else come in the second half of the year?
No, there's a second half of that that I haven't paid yet.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it typically comes in in two, in, in two bills. There's an initial bill for the setup and the, to set up the postage for that, the vendor does the mailing out for us. And then after the, they print the document and it goes, there's a, there's the bill for what, what they mailed out, for what, you know, what the, the number that they mailed out. So I haven't gotten that second bill yet.
Okay.
So it should be in line with what it has been the last couple of years.
Which line item are you talking about?
The census, it's 239 on the spreadsheet. It's 53840.
43840, yeah, okay. Oh, census expense, I see.
Yeah.
Actually, on the postage, I'm surprised that your postage wasn't a whole lot more because we needed to mail out the election ballots and things when somebody wanted to, to do a mailing, whatever. How is it that you were able to keep the postage as low as it is?
So for my, for the 21 actuals, that includes for postage, the letter that we sent out prior to town meeting and the town election, I pay, I sent out a letter telling people that they were able to vote by mail. And then the actual ballots that I mailed out for that election, I was able to take that money and put it towards CARES for the postage for, for those ballots. And then for the other elections that came in, came along, we were able to do that as well. The, the.
CARES is the answer. Thank you. I got it.
Yeah, CARES is the answer. CARES is the answer. So that is going away. I, I haven't, well, as of March 31st, some of those legislative reliefs or things that the, the government let us do for the, for elections is supposed to go away. There is a chance they may extend it, but we're kind of like waiting to see what will happen for the spring elections. But right now I do not anticipate, the way it's written, that it's going to end on March 31st and there will not be any legislative relief for people to do the vote by mail.
And that's in this budget anyway, or whatever, whatever we have to do, it's in the current budget and we'll deal with the transfers at.
Right. Right.
Any other questions for Beth?
But you won't, but you won't have mailing, perhaps more people who will do absentee, absentee balloting than they have in the past.
Yes, I, I feel like people maybe got used to doing the mail-in ballots now with the last couple of elections and maybe will look to do it as absentees. Now with absentees, technically you're supposed to have an excuse. There's, there's three reasons why you should be allowed to absentee vote. It, the government has defined COVID as being a reason for somebody to be disabled and not able to go vote and can't apply, can qualify for an absentee ballot. And I expect that to extend to be the option for this coming local election. So I do, I do think that there are some people that are going to start voting absentee. You know, I, I can't, when somebody comes and wants to vote absentee, I really can't challenge them.
Right, right. It's an honest, it's been an honest system for a long time.
Right. And I, I do think that, you know, that's another whole conversation is that I, I think that there's going to be a blending. The laws are going to catch up with themselves and the absentee and the early voting process are going to evolve and catch up with each other. And there won't be a, as defined, a distinction in a few years.
Thank you.
Kevin, would you like Beth to kind of speak to the warrant for the general code at this point?
Yes, please. So just a, as Beth did, just have some thoughts to share with you folks about the conflagration of the general code. So I'll, I'll, I'll turn that over to Beth and we'll be able to answer some questions. And I know we're taking a warrant later, but this will be a good time while she's here to give you a little additional insight.
Yeah, so this has been a project that's been out. Yeah. So, um, this has been a project that's been out there for a really long time. Um, it was on the back burner for me when I first came into the position. You know, we were a little, little busy with moving 180 something years worth of documents to the temporary location, moving back, you know, whatnot. Uh, getting into the, um, last year with COVID and then with being a presidential year was a crazy year for the town clerk's office. So, um, this has been one of those in-between projects that, um, we tried to get started up last year just before Kevin came. And, um, now trying to bring finally to the finish line. So, um, um, we're, we're getting there with the project. Um, when I picked it up, the editorial review, um, the, the initial draft had been done and there was an editorial review sent to us. It was, it was very thick with a lot of pages and questions and things we had to confirm. Um, a lot of that work had been done prior to me becoming clerk. Um, and then I had to pick it up, uh, and try and figure out, based on everybody's input, you know, uh, cull together all the answers and report that back to the, to the vendor. And, um, they, um, then, and I also sent them the, the, um, whatever, um, laws had changed, bylaws had changed with the last, uh, several years to bring it up, to bring it up to the current through the past, um, September, the, uh, June meeting that we had in June 20. So that was done and I've gotten back from them the updated version. And, um, there's just a couple of little questions that they have and it's time to take it to the, the final, the final point, um, to get it up on the website. There's a, they've got a, a mock, um, version of the website that I've started to look at, um, double check that the change, that the editorial changes had gotten in. And, um, there's just a few questions that they have. So this is a good time to talk about, um, how the town would want to proceed with it from here now that we've got this, um, got the, uh, the bylaws codified. Um, at town meeting, there are several, um, ways the town can vote on it. So, um,
The placeholder, oh, sorry, Beth. Just gonna say the placeholder that you, we've looked at thus far in the list of potential warrant articles, that last part that Beth just identified would be what we would be looking at as a, as a potential article. Um, I'd also mention too, just kind of, there is a connection to the operating budget as well. Um, under the contractual services, there is a maintenance fee associated with general code once it is live, um, which, uh, the $2,000 will, will cover that cost. So, um, and, and I think there's a third piece in there. I think it's the, um, the FOIA request software as, as well. So, um, the, the total cost for the, um, ongoing annual, once we get to the next step and it's online, um, I think, is it about a thousand dollars? Or 1,600? Is that what the number was, Beth, annually for the, there's two parts of the maintenance, I know that.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, is it?
Around that.
Whole pads are 1,200. Um, I, I think that the, the annual fee for this is more like 1,500 or 1,600.
Okay.
I got it.
And Beth and Kevin, the one-time cost, do, how much are we looking at for this warrant item?
So,
I don't think there's an additional cost that the warrant would take up. It's, it's the changes, um, to the, to the bylaw, basically is my understanding. So there's some, when they did their audit, there were some changes that need to be made, just minor spelling mistakes, things of that nature. Is that right, Beth? That those are the things that are written, um, bylaws would be updated to reflect consistency with the online version.
There's no cost to update those bylaws? Are they doing it?
That would, it, it's part of the contract that we would have with them to, right? I mean, it's all inclusive of what they've already done, isn't that right?
No, they're bringing it to add, um, the product that they're working on right now. Um, we have one more, um, one more piece to pay that, um, in February, this, this last draft that I'm looking at. Once, um, once I finished looking at that and sign off on it and it goes back to them for the final, what they, they call it the final draft, um, there'll be another invoice to them for, um, 1,57675. And then in delivery, um, after, um, after town meeting and it's been voted on, there'll be another 1,57675. And that will be the, for the final delivery of the actual product, project.
So that's what the cost is that we're asking for is for that final delivery of the product?
No, th- those are individual invoices. Um, no, the, um, the maintenance cost is separate. That actually is lower than I thought it was. It's, it's 1,195 dollars a year.
So after it's approved at town meeting, what actually takes place? Do they do something? Do we do something? And is there any cost associated with it?
Yeah, after, after, um, yes, the, after, after it's approved at town meeting and it's been finalized and we, um, we, uh, there will be a service agreement and it'll be 1,195 dollars. Then, then there's an additional, um, additional, um, budget item that they recommend because then every year as we update, um, we update, you know, we have town meetings and, but, and if bylaws are changed, then there could be, um, changes that we'd have to make and those would be handled ad hoc, so to speak. Those, we'd have to send them to them and they would update them in the code and add them into the code. And that could be an annual, um, they said to estimate 750 dollars for that.
Okay. So this isn't a, a cost item that's going on the warrant, um, to the town. This is for approval to change the bylaws, to change the spelling errors and, and consistency.
Right, it's to, 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 right, right. And it was, it was a formatting change too. They, you know, as part of it, they, they recommended a format. And so chapter numbers have changed and, and that sort of thing. So it's an overall formatting thing.
And who actually does that updating of the bylaws then physically changing our bylaws? The spelling, the formatting?
It'll, it'll be in the, uh, it'll, it'll be layered, I think, into the warrant article itself, um, where it is. And then, um, the, are you saying the hard copy on file of, of?
Yeah. Who actually then goes in and makes those spelling changes at permanent and updates the documents to reflect that and files them where they need to be, et cetera?
They do.
They do.
They do. If we, if we know, if we recognize something app, once it's finalized and it's up, aft- after town meeting and it's approved and it's up, once, um, if, if somebody sees a, a spelling error or there's a change to a general bylaw, then we would have to send it to them and then they would update it in the, in their software, in the system.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's what that additional seven, you know, they estimated it'd be like seven, eight hundred dollars a, a year for that. So we're still just trying to bring the project to, to com- to completion.
When it's complete, it'll be, we, I've seen this type of software when you're, um, organizing a conification. It's, it's, it'll allow for some, um, for the general public to be able to dive in, in a very consistent way to find material on the bylaws, uh, going forward, which will be a sort of a, go ahead, sorry.
Let me see if I can summarize some of the dollars so I understand it, if I'm correct. One is that we received a grant to provide most of the data online through this, through their, the company. So the grant paid for most of the work to be done. Because we didn't implement it, we've been trying to get it implemented, we've continued on. We have additional work that needed to be done to get it cleaned up beyond what the grant was able to cover. We found that there was just more work to do. And that in the current timeframe is equal to something like two 1,500 dollar bills or a total of $3,000, which is a sunk cost just done to, to get us. So we go to town meeting and we're fully on. Once it's approved, there are two kinds of bills that we will get from them on an annual basis. About 1,200 dollars a year for providing the service, the, uh, holding the data, whatever else. And then an additional estimated 850 dollar per year, but it'll vary based on how many changes we come up with in our bylaws. Is that it?
Right.
That's perfect.
So the first thing we need to do is agree that we're not going to make any bylaw changes in the next year. So we'll save 850 dollars. That was pretty simple. It's much easier at town meeting. Okay, I got, I got it. Thank you. Um, so, but I'd like to understand town meeting. Are we going to have an appendix or an attachment C that is, um, 20 pages long and contains all of our bylaws? That therefore the citizens can read and, and understand that it's housekeeping that'll get from where we are today to that, but the housekeeping is another thing you're going to sign off on?
I couldn't, to be determined. I don't, I haven't gotten to the final, uh, details with, um, KP Law to decide if that's the appropriate way to go. Um, want to make sure it's, it's obviously easily understood and, and, and readable, obviously, and accurate. So as we work through the process over the coming weeks, we'll have a better handle on what that might look like. That certainly.
What you wind up doing is getting it in front of the citizens and they have a chance to read it. I can't imagine many will read it, but they have a chance to read it. And if they want, compare it to if they had a copy of the bylaws from two years ago to compare it to what it says now. And I, I, I think it's a, well, well, let's see what KP says, but I,
Yeah.
My, my approach would tend to be to provide the data completely to the people or on request that it's clearly available to somebody at a minimum. Um, but one thing that did concern me, Beth, you, you mentioned something to the effect of, uh, changes, I, I think in numbering. Here, here would be my take. If we have something that's, um, listed, one, two, three, and sub, A, B, C, A, B, D, A, B, C, A, B, C, A, B, whatever. That's one thing if, if it's that way, but sometimes the number one is a one dot. In another case, it's a, a one space or one dash or something. Something changing from one dash and one dot to only one dot. Every kind of number that goes in will always be a one dot. That's great. But is there any suggestion that we're actually changing numbers? Something that was referred to a particular thing is now number three instead of number four? I, this would be a concern to me because of references here, there and everywhere to our rules and regulations, whether even in, in some, um, findings of the ZBA or whatever the case may be. I know that zoning, but, uh, sometimes they may have a reason to refer. Somebody referred to something in, in the past and now we change the numbers. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I believe that the numbers are changing and, uh, you know, I'll have to, um, I'll, I'll have to refer that to, to the general code and, and ask them about that. What, how that's been handled with other towns, honestly.
Okay. I mean, I can remember you and I, uh, when we were trying to do the science about a year ago, we, uh, found out that what was online was, was not correct. It was just, we knew we had to change it from some letters, but they, they were, they were actually incorrect online. They were not, we went back essentially to what was approved at town meeting and, and fixed it online. If we're going back to, we're correcting something that goes back to the original town meeting, then I, I have no problem with that. But if we're changing, we, I think we need to talk about this before we, I mean, they have a lot of experience and I'd like to know what they're saying. But, uh, at least.
I think it's a valid point, Dick, just for the sake of, of moving along because it's 5:30 and we still have a lot to do in executive session. We could take it offline.
Beth, thank you.
Thank you so much, Beth.
Does that cover it for me?
You're, you're, I think you're okay.
I think so. Unless anyone has any last questions for Beth?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to check my schedule and I believe our next, um, guest is going to be Wendy Hansberry, Board of Health Director. Wendy, thanks for hanging in with us. Heidi, you as well.
Good evening, everyone.
There's one item I'll point out, sorry, Wendy, was one item I will point out that, uh, does overlap between the CONCOM and the Board of Health, um, and, uh, our increase. Um, so when you do get to that, Wendy, Heidi, feel free. I mean, you can speak to it individually, but I know that it, it, it's a shared resource. So if there's a, if you feel needed to, to address it as a whole, feel free. Um, but I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. So just starting with personnel, um, it's shown with the 2% increase, like everyone has mentioned. Um, if I jump over to the other expense line items, we are requesting to restore, um, the administrative assistant position, which is currently split with the Conservation Commission. Um, 17 hours in each department originally back in, I believe it was 2018. Um, the position was 19 hours. Um, that was before I came here. For some reason, um, it was reduced for the employee that was in the position at the time to 17 hours. Um, and we would like to restore that. There was before any pandemic or any, you know, additional weight that, um, in job responsibilities that were put on that position. There was work to be done that was not being done or is being done outside of regular office hours.
Wendy, what numbers, uh, current hours are what? And what are you looking at to move to?
So I am, the current hours are 17 hours. So for the Board of Health, the position was combined three, four years ago. And so now it's a shared job between the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health.
At 17 hours?
At, no, at 17 hours apiece. So it is four hours total for two departments. They both full workloads. But previously, when it wasn't a combined job, both positions had more hours, uh, than 17. One, uh, leave conservation, Heidi Conservation had 18 hours. Board of Health had 19 hours.
Correct. Yep.
When it was put together, um, the, the workload didn't change, but the hours were reduced. So for the Board of Health, we wanted to go back to our 19 hours. There was a lot of work that had to be done outside of those 17 hours when I first got here, a year and a half ago. Um, and since the pandemic has hit, it's at least doubled. I mean, there's just continuous phone calls, you know, work to be done. And that position is, is, is definitely overfull. I, I mean, I, I would like to, um, it's justifiable. I, I just, I, I can go through the, the filing that has to be done outside of regular office hours. You know, the person there, and we all know who it is. It's, um, that person stays extra hours, um, stays on Friday until two or three in the afternoon, stays on, you know, Thursday until five or 5:30, um, comes in over the weekends. Um, you know, goes that extra mile. We've certainly had a conversation with Kevin about, um, you know, the, the trash and, and dealing with that and potentially that will move, but it hasn't yet. Um, it is still part of the Board of Health Administrative Assistance Job that is down there, that came down there at the same time as the job was combined. So, so there is more responsibility and more work to be done with less hours. So I'd just like those two hours back.
Um, could, could I ask, you weren't here, Wendy, so you, you wouldn't know, but Heidi, do you remember back when the position was merged? Often what happens is, you know, the case is made, well, we can go down in administrative hours, we'll combine this and then we'll take those funds and we need it for something else. So it's an offset or there's, um, the, the rationale as to why those hours can go down because we're finding some efficiency or something else onto the side. Do you know why those hours were combined and reduced back when that occurred?
So it, it definitely wasn't, um, I came in, in the midst of it being combined. Um, the person that was in the position at the time wasn't willing to work any more hours combined. And it was kind of tailored to the person that was in the position, knowing that it really wasn't adequate. Um, but in order to get it combined, have the presence for the, you know, because having them split like they were, you know, because having them split like they were, you know, you might have both assistants in at the same time, but then there was no assistant for lots of other hours. So the combining was done to increase the ability to help the public and, you know, have the presence and have the face during open hours and all of those good things. But the person doing the position at the time wasn't willing to go any more hours than that. So the hours were tailored at the time. And then the person who's in the position now, you know, took over at, you know, after with additional workload being put on.
Okay.
So we just kind of had to deal with it.
Are you also looking for additional hours for your 17?
So originally Conservation had 18. I had put an ask in for an additional hour last year, which was not, you know, was denied. So honestly, I did not put in for it this year and was in hopes that at the very least, the Board of Health position, because certainly that has taken up an immense amount of time. At least those two hours would be allowed.
Marshall, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, it sounds as though the change was made almost entirely to tailor it to the person.
It basically was.
Which is curious because I don't see how that really, I mean, I totally believe that that's why it was done, but it doesn't give more face time to the public. I think two people would have done that better than one person because you can cover different days and it went down in hours. So I'm not sure how that helped the public.
I think it helped the public because instead of having two people work from, say, eight to one, they had one person working from eight to four. So that was sort of how you get more public face time. I have not heard, and I've been asking around of any trade off, like where did the savings go? Was there, was it given to somebody else? Was it put in another program? And I have not heard anything like that, that it was just tailored to the person and it was cut down as it was combined. And there kind of was no, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you're correct. There was no, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't done for savings. The money wasn't shuffled somewhere else. It was that each, each department had a separate person and filling part-time positions and schedules is a much different thing than filling something that is, you know, eight to four and has coverage. So there was a lot of times when there was no assistant in either office because of the way hiring part-time work goes, because of all of those factors, there was a lot of time when there was nobody there.
Okay, thanks.
Should I go on or were there any other questions about that? So the next line is, I believe around the same time, the Board Secretary was unfunded. So it does need to be funded. Currently, there is a person who happens to be the administrative assistant in the other position is doing the work for a compensation, which is not able to be, you know, used because they're busy working all the hours. So my request is for four hours per month at a maximum to cover the cost of minutes taker and record keeper for the Board of Health. I don't know if anybody had questions on that.
Thanks, Wendy. Yeah, I think you want to cover the other. I know we got a few items there that are.
Sure, we do. And as I go on down, the rest of the asks were, we have, the dead animal pickup is the Board of Health's responsibility. It, the number is, is an increase from last year's ask. When we became responsible for it, we made the choice to go with a private contractor because there was a lot of reasons. And I know that Kevin has been working towards finding another more economical mechanism, but this is sort of our best, our best option at the time, which is somebody who can pick these animals up and dispose of them in their entirety, like from, you know, from the phone call, we never hear about it again. So we don't have to find a place for it. We don't have to deal with picking it up and the staff for that and the transportation of it. So in the past 10 months, that has been almost $7,000. So the existing line has 4,300 in it and I'm asking for an additional 2,700 to meet that projected cost. No questions on that. We were going to move on to the medical sharps. So we're asking for a line item for medical sharps. Previously, this was an expense that we took out of our general budgets. It was shared with Bauxford. So it was a little more than half of this price. Because of COVID, we believe it's because of COVID, residents have been using the Dropbox more frequently and we have been receiving sharps more often. And so we have to pick it up monthly. Bauxford now has their own Dropbox, so they no longer share the expense with us. So this projected cost is for pickup once a month and we actually put in an extra two pickups because I believe in July and September, we had, we had to pick it up twice or we were charged for two pickups.
Wendy, who's dropping sharps in the box?
Residents of Topsfield.
And so they're giving themselves more shots because of COVID?
So, so medical sharps, you can't throw them away in the trash. That's not legal. And there are a lot of occasions, reasons that people give themselves injections, whether it's B12 shots, whether it's, you know, there are some high blood pressure medicines, I'm sorry, insulin medications, there's, there's lots of sharps that get generated from some medical conditions. And so they're required to put them in a little red box and then they, the key ask is the, the box drop is beside the fire department. So people can go and drop their medical sharps there.
I think the reason you might be seeing an increase is because people previously may have been dropping them off at a doctor's office or something like that, but now they're not going to those places.
Yes, and there used to be a lot of offices that would have those, have facilities too. So they're just not there anymore.
That makes sense then. I just couldn't figure out why people were doing more injections because of COVID, but.
I said that weird.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
No, but could, sorry, Wendy, could I just interject? The one thing, sorry, the one thing that we're seeing in, in COVID is the clotting sequelae. So now we're seeing all kinds of people with chest pain and those kind of things. And so they're using thinners. So they're doing, there's subcutaneous injections of Lovinox or whatever. So we're definitely seeing an increase in people on thinners, which are using needles. So that's another, that's definitely directly related to COVID. And right now, what we're seeing is a lot of chest pain, a lot of pulmonary emboli, a lot of clotting problems as a sequelae after COVID.
Thank you.
Any other questions about? So my last request was for vaccine expense. So last year, we asked for an increase for vaccine and you were kind enough to give it to us. A couple of things, I know last year we talked about potentially increasing what we got back from reimbursement because of a glitch with the VNA. We did a good job. We got all of the pictures of the insurance cards and did a lot of the paperwork, but the VNA did not do a couple of things, including getting some signatures. So we ended up getting $2,235 back and we had spent 36, $3,605. So it was, we were in the red by $1,371 rounded up. This year, we have been told by the state of Massachusetts that all students are required to have a flu vaccination. This requirement, even though it was extended, the previous deadline was December 31st. I believe it's been extended out into February, but we were able to facilitate getting vaccines, getting flu shots in clinics. We held two clinics, one in September and one in early November. And we're able to vaccinate a large part of our, a large group of our residents. And for some reason, I don't see that number and I don't know why. But we were over 300 people. Vaccine can be expensive, high dose vaccine for our senior population. We were able to get a lot of our seniors. That vaccination can be up to $55 apiece. Regular, regular dose vaccine is around, I believe, $20. We're working with the VNA to, we have been working with the VNA for the flu clinics. And we are again, and this year, we didn't see any glitches. And so hopefully the paperwork went in and we'll see a better return. So the ask was for an additional 5,400 because, sorry, 5,000, $5,040? Because we spent a total of $8,739.38 on purchasing just the vaccine. The clinic itself, which was run between the VNA and the volunteers, was included in the VNA contract. So that was just vaccines.
Wendy, can I ask, these vaccines, are they available at these people's doctors' offices and aren't vaccines covered if they were to go there?
Vaccines are covered and we do bill for them. They actually were running out vaccines. People were calling us saying they couldn't get it at CVS. They couldn't get it at their doctor's office. And it is, it is a mandated, you know, job for the Board of Health to be able to provide vaccinations. So.
Oh, I didn't realize that was mandated. We have to be able to give vaccinations if people ask for them?
We should be able to provide vaccinations. That's one of our jobs.
We should be able to or we're mandated?
And I should really have Cheryl speak to this because she is much more eloquent when it comes to what we're required to do. But we are required to provide preventative medication, medicines for, for this. I have been told in my entire 20 years that we are supposed to provide flu clinics. Some, some towns I do know do cooperate with pharmacies to have their flu clinics. And we cooperate where we have hired our VNA to do that.
And most of the communities I'm aware of around here, if not all, are doing, do flu vaccinations annually for, for as long as I can, I don't know, for as long as it's been, it's been an option for people.
But we had an increase this year because there was this strong push to get everybody to get a, especially those vulnerable, to get a flu vaccine so to ensure that they did, or to encourage the fact that they would not have both flu and COVID at the same time. I assume that next year would be more normal when it comes to this time of the year or the fall, this coming fall, that we'll be back to the normal rate at which people get flu vaccines. I don't know if it's the case, but it would seem reasonable to say that. And so the number that we have typically done in the past through regular flu clinic and then the one perhaps at Holiday on the Green, that sort of thing. We, somewhere between 150 and maybe a little bit more than that each year, Wendy?
Yes. One of the increases, well, one of the increases was school age children, which we want to be able to also accommodate. They probably will not roll back that requirement.
Wendy, is that K through 12? Is that what the state is?
No, it's actually up from pre-K all the way up to 29, so postgraduate schools.
Really?
Yeah. They, they were really trying to figure out how to make sure everybody got the vaccine this year. And that was one of the ways.
And a lot of them do get it through their pediatrician because the kids do go to annual physicals typically more than, more than the adults do. But the main question.
Private, Wendy? I'm sorry, Dick. I was just checking. Was that public and private? It's all kids in the state of Massachusetts?
So the state can't force private or home schools?
Okay.
In the same way that they can public schools, but most of the private schools I'm aware of fell in line with that requirement. And our clinics were able to accommodate four years and older. We didn't do anybody younger than four years because that's younger than pre-K. And we just didn't feel like that was necessary. They can find it from their pediatrician if they want, down to six months, you can actually get it from six months on.
Sure. Thanks, Dick. Sorry.
The main question, the thread of the main questioning here is how much, not how much are we spending this year, but how much we expect to spend next year? And would there be a change down again? Because I think you're trying to drive it at this point, based on our experience this year.
It is a year-to-year experience, but because of the new mandate, I'm not sure what next year will bring. My understanding is that in, when I was here in 2009, we had an increase from 85 or something to 150. And then, of course, this year we had a very large jump. Not sure how much of a jump or reduction we can expect next year. Some reduction, I would hope that was to very large clinics, but.
Obviously done a great job, especially in this year when we needed it the most. But I would like to think that perhaps we should look at history with some assumptions that by the fall, we may be more in normal mode. And so reasonably, I think, this is for discussion, but I'm sorry. I think that going back to what we would typically expect in past years would be appropriate for this budget. We have an agreement with the FINCOM that should something happen in the COVID breakout again or something by November, October, October, November, they'll provide a reserve fund transfer for another $4,000 of vaccines or something.
Excuse me, Mike, could you put yourself on mute, please?
I will.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing further for Wendy, just to keep moving along. Thank you, Wendy, for pulling all that together and giving us that update and those numbers. Anything else that you wanted to add before we go on to warrants?
Nope, that was it, except for we're trying to do our best in COVID.
Thank you. I know, challenging environment for sure. Okay, warrants, Kevin, do you want to?
So we have two that isn't, directly involves the, two that we have on the potential list that involve the Board of Health and the Health Director. And I'd ask Wendy to talk about, one, which was on last year, but was, was not put on as an article, but is back again this year for discussion, and that is the septic loan program. And the second one is a discussion around a vaccine revolving fund potentially. And that might, there's, there's two layers to that one and we'll talk a little bit about that. One, that's more immediate, that actually ties to our vaccinations that we'll be doing and we've started doing around COVID. And then a long-term approach to the vaccinations as well, which, which could fall into an actual warrant article potentially. Both Wendy and Catherine can also help explain sort of what those options look like. Both Wendy and Catherine can also help explain sort of what those options look like, but I will let Wendy maybe start off with the septic loan program.
Sure. So some of you might remember last year, the Board of Health would like to propose that we do a septic loan program, which is borrowing money from the state and using it to lend out to homeowners as part of a betterment program so that they can repair their septic systems. And this is, there's a lot of reasons to do this. From the Board of Health side, it helps us reduce non-point source pollution, which is, you know, failed septic systems in this case. And you're talking about protecting your drinking water as well as, you know, your other resources. The, the big pull for, or the, you know, the really helpful point for residents is they would be able to borrow this money from the town at a very low, I'm sorry, low interest rate. And that will, that would just, and give them a long time to be able to pay it off. It would be a great help to people, especially during, you know, after this year, a lot of people are in a lot of a different financial situation. We have a lot of support for this program. I know that the, the Veterans Coordinator, Dick Cullen, wrote a letter in support of it. There's, there's quite a few people in town that, you know, we could come out and support for this. I truly believe in this program. It is, you know, just an awesome program for residents. It is a huge help for those people who just can't spend $30,000, $40,000 or can't get a loan for that kind of money. So please put it on.
And Wendy, there's a residual impact on the, if more people are able to address failed systems or impacted systems through a loan program, the water quality improves in the, in the general area from wells and stuff of that nature, obviously.
Right. And preventing, you know, sewage from, you know, breaking out onto people's lawns as well as just making, you know, in general, your septic system safer and functioning is, is really important just for everybody. It's a benefit and it does, it does definitely address water quality. At the state level, they call it non-point source pollution when you have a failed system. And, and it is something that can get picked up in waterways. So sure, several of you are probably familiar with that.
Wendy, just last question of mine, could you just, how many people do you know of who might have taken advantage of this? Have you had anyone reach out to you in the last year or so?
Six. I've had about six people asking me about this. It's one of the reasons that Dick Cullen wrote a letter in support of it. He's had several veterans inquire about how they could go about fixing their systems. For a case of, you know, somebody who's looking to sell their house, they need to upgrade their system, fix their system. They can go through the betterment loan process, get the money, fix the system. As soon as they go to sell their house, they do have to pay it all back. So it gets paid back with the sale. So the, the town can definitely get the money back to pay back the loan from the state. But there, there have been a lot of people who have asked me.
And then I would just maybe comment from an operational standpoint, because it does touch more than one department to pull, pull something like this off. And we had a conversation about this and first question I had, and I had a really honest question and an honest answer, I said, do we have the capacity to pull something like this off, to ramp something up while we're dealing with COVID and dealing with a lot of other significant projects that are in front of us and will be in front of us? And I was really touched by the response from both Catherine and Wendy. Their first response was, we're here because it's, we think it's the right thing to do. And, and it can make a big impact in people's lives if they're able to address an issue like this. And, and they said, we'll, we'll make it happen. So, you know, I, I am conscious of all the things happening and Catherine talked about her department and what they're dealing with earlier. But, um, you know, it's, it's really heartwarming when your teammates, they're looking at the greater good and saying, well, roll up our sleeves and figure it out because we got to help people if we can. So just.
Kevin, can I just do devil's advocate for a moment? Both Wendy and Catherine are asking for additional hours because they can't handle the workload they currently have. And now we're taking on an additional program.
So I would like to say that it's Sue who can't actually complete all the work that she currently has on her desk. And I am willing to work to get this program up and running. And it, and it does serve the residents. So I just, I came into Topsfield with experience on this program and believe it's worth it. Once we get it up and established, it's not too much of a time sink.
I just had a comment, it sounds like a decent idea to me, but it also sounds like a paperwork nightmare. And my, my question, you answered it, Kevin, to a certain extent. Catherine says she can handle it, but it's going to increase workload for other people. And that concerns me when you're talking about six people in town.
How many failed systems do we have now?
I didn't do a current count, but we probably currently have three or four that are failed that have not been resolved this year.
And so they'll just go on forever?
They have to be fixed. They have a two-year requirement. And once they, once I get notified that they have been failed, they have two years to fix it.
Get fixed, okay.
What happens?
It has to.
Yeah. What happens? Let's say I'm a person, this program doesn't exist, you told me I have two years and I just don't have whatever, $30,000 to fix it. What, what happens at the end of those two years?
Well, I can start the process of taking you to court or we just try, we really try to work with people. Usually people end up selling their house is what happens.
I understand that. It was more of a curiosity. I mean, it sounds like.
Yeah, no, I, I've actually never had to. I came from a town where we had the program. And, you know, when, when people were in sticker shock of $30,000, $40,000 and unable to get that kind of loan, we were able to provide this service for them, so.
Because it sounds like this program, to what you just said, means that you never get to that point. If, if I don't have the money, you're like, well, here, let me introduce you to this program and the problem gets fixed.
Well, in either case, you're paying back a loan. The people aren't just, they either take the loan out from the town and pay us back monthly, or at the sale of their house, if that's pending, or they take a loan out from a bank at a slightly higher rate.
I, I, I get that part. It sounds like the terms of this loan are better than anything that you're going to get if this program doesn't exist.
Yes. It, it certainly, it sounds like that.
It may be very interesting though. In today's market, it may be very interesting, especially what we got from the bank for our notes in that particular case, especially if somebody is out there to sell their house, they may get a better rate, in this case, in today's day and age, from the bank than they would from the state program. Because the state program is screwed in probably at a fixed rate that's readjusted quarterly or something of that nature and not as flexible as the banks can do. I am concerned about it. Last year, we had this on the.
Fixed rate.
As on the agenda. And we did discuss it and it was rejected. Is there anything that has changed, Wendy, since last year to make it different, to go ahead and take something that we already rejected?
Why was it, well, before you answer that, because I wasn't here last year, can you tell me what the, the idea behind the rejection was?
If you want, Wendy, I'll try.
It had to do a lot with the sort of thing that Boyd talked about, the cost, the involvement of other people and the additional cost for each of the departments, but especially for the Treasury Department to be able to manage the program.
It, so, Mr., what we did last year is we, we sat down as a finance team and brought Wendy and we talked about if we went forward with this, how would, what would it look like from a rollout? Then we talked about what capacities were available to, to take that on. We, it was, everyone went in eyes wide open from our, from the team side of, of what that would look like to, to tackle that. I think towards the end, when it was decided to pull it off, we were actually into the COVID timeframe or heading close to it. And there were some unknowns there as well. I think that might have factored into, a little bit into the factor of ultimately capacity and what we might be able to, to take on.
So one of the big changes was that this year, I've been asked directly by six or seven different people about, is there anything I can, is, is there any financial help you can give me? Can, can you tell me how I'm going to be able to afford to fix my septic system? And I had to tell them, no, there is nothing. You have to go to your bank or your credit union. And my experience has been, most people don't even know to ask me that. So that I had seven people ask me that, just kind of reinforced how important the program really is. And potentially Dick Cullen would have a more accurate picture since he works with the veterans and probably has, and again, Paula Burke, and I know she's not here anymore, but she would also have maybe a more accurate view of the need, the financial need within the community and if it would be worthwhile. And I can certainly reach out to them and ask them if they would give me something in writing, letting me know one way or the other, whether it was, there is none or there is a financial need. But I believe there is a financial need.
Kevin, you talk a lot with businesses. Could I make a suggestion that you talk with the three or four banks in our area? It'd have to be all of them or at least three of them involved. Explain the issue that we have with potentially septic systems of a half a dozen people and how they would like to go about helping to get those loan programs going. I, I think that's a logical way to do it. Let's turn to private industry. Make them aware of what the situation is and then have something that Wendy can turn to people and say, the following three banks have a program. This is what, go talk with them, they'll try to work something out for you. It'll vary for every individual. I'm selling my house, I'm not selling my house, I'm going to keep it for the next 40 years. So it's going to vary, but I think the banks might be able to handle it. Let's see what the banks can do. If they have, if they reject us, that's a different story, but I think it's worth it to try that.
My general feeling is if the people who are tasked with the extra work tell us that they can handle the extra work, then I'm going to take them at their word.
So. If I could just add to that, I, I, I think, excuse me, I think this type of program makes a town look good. It's not a labor intensive program. It's not a time intensive program, especially when you have people who are veteran at running this type of program and familiar with it. So, so it's, it's, it's not, you know, just to not do it because I'm asking for extra hours or Wendy's asking for extra hours. I don't think that should be the reason that you choose not to do it. But I just want to say again, I think it's a, it's a program that makes a town look good.
I would just add, Marshall, that when we had the discussion last year, it always comes down to additional services versus cost. And there always is a cost for a program in, in time and effort. And over time, there tends to be creep in the sense that, I mean, it could be a successful program, in which case double the number of people come to us, because who wouldn't want to go for a lower cost loan versus going to a bank? And the workload just tends to grow. So in this case, if we're looking at helping six people out of a town of 6,000, you know, the 6,000 bear the cost of any additional services that we provide. And I agree, it's a great program, makes the town look good. It's just a weight of services versus expense to the town.
So one of the things is, is you get to actually set the limits. So if you wanted to, which, which I actually came from a town where we did not have those limits, you can set the parameters about where in town those loans are allowed to be issued, about financial limits, how much a person can earn before they're no longer qualified. I mean, there, there are ways to sort of make sure that only the most, that it goes to only the people who really need it the most, so that it's not, you know, somebody who makes $400,000 a year gets to have a loan at, you know, 2.5%. That's not, we're talking about.
I assumed that that was part of the program, that this is a need-based program and I'm not just going to say, well, I could do it at my bank or I could do it with my own money, but your rates are better, so I'm going to come get it from you. I assume it's need-based and if it's not, to your point, it sounds like we can designate it as such.
If you don't mind, I think if we could move on, just because we have a lot of good information now, things to think about and discuss later. And Dick's idea perhaps is to reach out to the banks and see if there's an alternative just to kind of keep things going right now.
We'll talk to the banks, we'll, I'll pose the proposition. If someone came to you and said that their septic failed and they can't afford to do it, what would a loan look like? How, how would you help them? And we'll get you that information.
That'd be great. Because if for some reason they come back and they say they could do it for three and a half and the, and the state could do it for two and a half, then we're looking at a 1% difference in interest payments, because they still have to pay it back every month. Is that a significant savings to even, you know, people who are struggling? Because they're going to have to make a monthly payment regardless. It's just the difference between the two.
Do you, if I could go just out of order very, if Wendy doesn't mind, Heidi has a very simple budget. Is Heidi still on? We, we lost Heidi. Okay, nevermind.
Heidi's having technical difficulties and sends her apologies.
If she, if she's able to get back on, we'll, we'll bring her in. But I was going to suggest we just bring her up, but it's okay, we can keep going for now.
If she can get back in, we'll, we'll slaughter in.
Maybe my next one will be really easy and simple. We're just going to bring it up, we're just going to bring it up for discussion and you guys can think about it. So it would be a revolving fund for a vaccine account. And I'm not sure which one of us you really want to hear from regarding that. I know Kevin and Catherine and I both have a good general idea of what it's supposed to look like. It is supposed to, we are trying to find a way to set up and make sustainable the COVID vaccination clinics that need to start happening now that have been happening. They were very successful for our first responders. We were really excited to be able to get them done as soon as they were eligible. That was rolled out very well between the five towns, so Topsfield, Boxford, Middleton, Hamilton, Wyndham. We cooperated fabulously. Everybody's was very appreciative. And I think I should let Kevin just take the, the piece that explains why we want it to be a revolving fund.
So there's really two parts of this. One of them is, two parts that are really, at the end of the day, the same, but the, the first is the, the COVID vaccinations. And with us taking, we hope, a leadership role in, in helping locally and regionally with the, with the vaccinations. One of the things that Catherine, Wendy and I talked about was having the ability to set aside a revolving fund for those vaccinations now, which would allow us, so we get reimbursed money in and money out so that we can pay for those shots without any delays or, or hopefully going into the red. We would potentially need a little bit of, potential seed money just to have something in the accounts when we get started. Catherine can speak to that maybe a little bit in a second. But the, the S, the, the overall essence is that with the vaccinations and, and the pandemic and everything, everything along with it, there's going to be potentially some costs that come in, but obviously costs that go out. We, we believe based on a budget and a business plan that we put together, and I call it a business plan because there's, the, the ultimate result, you know, needs to be revenue neutral or revenue positive, if, if we can get there. And, and all, all estimations appear that we can get there with a local or regional vaccination site for the pandemic. And so that would be, again, money in, money out, which allows us to move through that process and that, using that revolving fund. The second part, and this is the Warren article, is a conversation, and, and this is more high level for today, is do we want to have a vaccine, a, a, a flu vaccination account? It can be one and the same. Vaccination, right. So the COVID vaccination funds that come in and out right now would be for COVID, but that would be in a vaccination fund that's set up now. Long-term through town meeting, we then go to a vote that allows us to have that revolving fund continue for the flu vaccines, or if there's a future vaccination that needs to take place, that we leverage that account, that revolving account. There's a little work we, that needs to be done before we're, we're in a good place with it. We, we're really doing, Wendy referenced it, I think, earlier, that we, we're trying to look at the VNA, VNA contracts, our costs right now to provide those services with the flu vaccinations and see, you know, what, how, really break those numbers down. and see, you know, what, how, really break those numbers down and see if there's more revenues that should come back to the town during those flu vaccination times. Because there is some, right now, there's an administrative cost associated with it. So it's not a dollar for dollar. But a lot of vaccinations around us are seeing net, net neutral or net zero or zero impact to the budget, or they're actually, they're seeing monies go back to their general funds or to their revolving funds if they have them set up. So.
Kevin, what exactly does a revolving fund do for us that we can't do with our accounts as they are set up right now?
I know one of the issues that we were really looking at the revolving fund for was transparency, so that we could actually see, especially with the COVID vaccine, we could see directly what are the costs for putting on these clinics? Where is that? And then when the money comes back to be able to say, okay, this is what we had to pay out. And it's just the transparency piece was, I know, a major factor in considering the revolving fund.
Okay, so I've got a tracking tool. Yeah, okay.
And, and yeah, it, and like I said, there should be, we, we believe we should be seeing a positive number, not a negative number, when we provide the vaccinations, both the COVID and the flu. But we're looking into the flu one to make sure we, that we're doing everything we can on that for full reimbursements. Catherine, did you want to say anything? I know we talked earlier and you had some thoughts. I don't know.
Well, you guys are pretty much handling it. But, you know, we're doing the COVID vaccines right now. And in some ways, the cart's before the horse, that, you know, we have expenses that are happening now, and we have revenues that we anticipate. And, you know, the way, there's, one way we could do it is pay the expenses out of the board of health account using a reserve fund transfer, and then the money would go into the general fund. It's harder to track that way. And I did have conversation with Dick Kingston, our, our financial advisor, our financial, does our financial auditor, excuse me, who suggested a revolving account might be a more transparent way to manage this in terms of being able to track the revenues and the expenses. I, you know, there's strict laws regarding revolving funds, and one is that they're not, you know, there's a limit in terms of how much can be spent out of it, which is set by the board. And then also that the, the expenses don't exceed the revenue. In this case, the expenses are coming first. So we would be looking, that would have some seed money, request a reserve fund transfer of perhaps $5,000 to, in order to run the revolving fund. And then at any point, if that, that fund ever became like something that had a lot of money, and at any point the board of selectmen can pull that money into the general fund. There's nothing to stop that. But I, I do feel, having considered both options, I feel the revolving fund is the best way to manage the COVID vaccine, potentially, if we can get a handle on the flu vaccine, and then if we become a super site.
So the item you mentioned, Catherine, about expenses can't exceed revenues, most likely they will. Our history has been that we don't get reimbursed the full because there's administrative expense involved, that 10%. Anytime we have to go after, you know, an insurance carrier to get the money. So probably chances are good the expenses will exceed.
This is, this is a little bit different than the flu vaccine. And Wendy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's, there's a, perhaps a small fee that the state pays for every flu, whether it's, for every vaccine, I'm sorry, whether it's 17 or 45, there's discrepancy in terms of what that exact amount is. Additionally, then there's insurance reimbursement as well. So you've got two sources coming in. And then in this case, Wendy is actually that person who's the administrative person, so we're not losing that 10%. So it could be a wash. It could be more revenue. It looks like it could be a higher revenue stream. But it would be something that we'd have to carefully monitor.
Right.
There are two things going on here. One, one is the flu and the other is the COVID. And I think we need to think of them very differently. In the case of COVID, the way which the, there's, there's hopefully no reimbursements involved here. This is, the vaccines are all being paid for through the federal government. And those things, the actual implementation of those things may change. So it's a very changing environment. I would suggest in this particular case, because it's a short-term thing, we could quote, do a revolving fund, but I think it's just as easy, regardless of whether we make money or lose money, or whatever the case may be, we need to do it and we need to do it well. And I think keeping it simple, just, I would do the reserve fund transfer into the health, health account for this year to take care of COVID. Whatever we have to do, it's an emergency. And maybe CARES, the new CARES, whatever comes along, will in fact, provide that funding. But let's, let's keep it simple. We've got all the accounts in place to do these things. We need, we don't have the money, but a reserve fund transfer or CARES type fund might cover that and just get it done.
So we're actually looking.
You know, we were back to the flu clinics. We've been at this a number of times. Wendy, you gave us the example of a year ago when we had revenues of some $2,000 and expenses of some $3,000. So that doesn't work too well with a, with a revolving fund. As you point out, we have to be at least revenue neutral, if not on the positive side. And in that case, would have created a problem. So we've known it's worked for years in the other way, meaning in the budget, I would say, let's keep it that way.
So one of the issues or one of the differences between how we are doing COVID vaccine clinics and flu clinics are, we do not have the VNA involved in the COVID vaccine clinics. And we think that that is where the difference between coming out on a net neutral or positive side versus being in the negative. And that's what I'm working on. I'm trying to find out why that is happening, because it's in our contract with them that we are, we get the services. So we're not really sure what's going on. And I, having found it, I am now actively pursuing it with Commonwealth Medicine, who is the partner that does the insurance claims. So.
The one thing we want to come out of this with is, regardless of what mechanisms we're using, and I'm sure this is the case, we will do what's necessary, as to save the town, Board of Health especially, will do what's necessary to ensure that we make it the easiest and the best way of getting vaccinated for COVID in Topsfield, correct?
Right. And that's, that's my aim now. That's my big job.
And we have, we're, we're very fortunate. We have an absolute superstar in Wendy and her team. We're very, very fortunate. She's done amazing work and continue to.
Great.
Thank you.
That is our, that's the, I think, they, they hear, that's the mantra we've been saying. We've, we've got it. If we get the, we're tasked with being in a leadership role, we're going to do it, knock it out of the park. We've said that for a while.
A revolving, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but a revolving fund actually, to your point, will make it easier to partner with our, our neighbors, which we have done to get our vaccinators, you know, the clinical lead from Hamilton, we had, you know, a nurse help us from Middleton, we had a paramedic from Middleton, the fire chief from Hamilton, and, you know, administrators from Wyndham. All of these people are long-term, they have expenses, you know, I mean, the, having the ambulance sit down there, having paramedics attend, it would just make it easier for all of the towns to be able to see it.
I just can't see how the revolving fund would particularly help that. My suggestion is that we move on. We've got a lot of things going.
Okay.
We're all into it already.
Is there any other lost information you want to share with us, Wendy or Catherine, that you think would help us in discussion of this later?
Just one more thing is that this, we would be looking to do a revolving fund on this sooner than later. Generally, the law requires an annual town meeting to, to vote a revolving fund. However, because COVID is new, the revenue is new and not currently in the general fund, it can be voted by the Board of, Board of Selectmen until the next town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Was that it, Wendy, for everything for you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
If it's all right with you, Madam, thanks, Wendy. If it's all right with you, Madam Chair, I'll take the Conservation Commission budget on behalf of Heidi.
Before, before we just close that out, Kevin, I think I heard when you talked about Wendy's budget, you're going to work on this dead animal, pick up some, and perhaps on the sharps to find out if we can find better, less expensive things?
Yeah, the, the dead animals, I'm trying to get it back over to the DPW. It was always in parks and cemetery, and it was taken out under Robin.
I didn't mean to get into great detail. You're still working on some thought, so.
There's a couple of options that we might be able to reduce the cost. We'll still obviously have a.
The final budget may be less. Thank you.
So.
Okay, conservation, Kevin?
So this is funded through, the, is, sorry, revol, revolving fund, right, Catherine? Enterprise revolving, the CONCOM Conservation Commission?
No enterprise.
It's a revolving fund, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. It's getting late. This is the revolving fund that basically, the funds raised through fees and et cetera covers the cost for the department. There's little, there is little overhead for the department in general, from how they operate. You did, you did hear earlier that the, his, the last year, Heidi did ask for the additional hour for the administrative assistant position, but this year she's, she has not asked for it. So basically, the only increases on the, the town's money is the 2% increases for salary.
Great. That's, shouldn't be any questions on that. Good job, Kevin.
Great job.
Yeah, no problem. So, the other one, I'll take, if, I was going to say I could take the council on aging one as well for, for you.
Sure.
Let you know what's on there. That is level funded. You'll notice on there, let me just pull down to the right category. So you'll notice in there, there's a reduction in the salary. That represents the new hire and the accepted rate for her relative to her predecessor. There is the 2% increases for the administrative assistant, as well as for the van drivers. And then within her operating, the council on aging operating budget, we left it level funded and at guideline 0%.
Great. Thank you. Town Hall.
Right. Scroll right back up to the top. So Donna and I, maybe we'll tag team it, Donna. And Donna did a great job on the, pulling a lot of the details and, and working with me, who tried to get a little more granular this year with some of it. I mentioned earlier, one of the key concepts, you know, with this budget is, is, you know, I said to everybody, the theme's transparency. One of the things we looked at to try to become a little more transparent in regards to the computer other category, and allocating funds that are directly necessary to fund a department from an IT standpoint into those departments and as stand-alones. So we, you'll notice there's a significant reduction in that of $12,850. And say that the other costs that, that, kind of bouncing around on you, I apologize. The, the first item I'd note, I'd point out, though, is the most impactful one, and that is the electricity. Last year, we, we looked at actuals when we put an estimate out there, but we didn't have a full year of actuals, as I understand it, in the building. The building footprint increased, as we all know, with the new construction projects, so more space to heat. And as a result of that, coupled with increased rates, I think of around 6%, we saw an increase, we're on target to actually double our, our budget this year in actual expenditures for that line item. And so the, the additional ask is to go from $20,000 to $40,000. At the same time, we, our actuals relative to gas have gone down significantly, relatively speaking, to that account. So that was reduced by $2,000 in an effort to offset that. What else? The.
Muni software, an additional 1,500?
Yep. So they came in a 3% contractual increase this year. I called them, I said, we can't afford it. And we got them down.
Which line on them are we talking about?
Uh, this is the, the town Muni software, 53044.
044, thank you.
So called them up when I got the contract, said, we can't afford it. Talked them down. I think we ended at two and a quarter, two and a half percent increase this year. But that, that's the contracted obligation. If for, and we weren't talking big dollars, but it was actually really interesting. They, they did dig in a little bit, but we're, I, you know, we were able to get them down for this year due to COVID.
Great.
And then.
Great.
Yeah. And then the, we took out, I'd also mention, we took out of that 12 under the IT. We also took out the Civic Plus, which is our website provider. We put it into the PEG account, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, in a minute, a few minutes. And I'll, maybe I'll explain that to you when we get to that line item, the logic behind doing so. But that's another item that was taken out, as well as Tula's 7,500 for her Patriot property.
And the FOIA directive, that go to Beth?
That was to Beth. Exactly. And then the facility management, last year, there was a request for $5,000 additional. And Donna, I'll let you, maybe if you want to speak to it, you, because you're more closely directly involved with, with Paul and his services and the expansion and that we're looking at with this, with what he does. But it, it does, towards, as I understand it, towards the end of the year, it has been a little tight last year, and we're projecting that it could be tight this year as well. And he has proven to be a resource with helping us drive some of the costs down for some of the projects by helping us with scope, helping us with multiple bids, identifying vendors in the marketplace that we might not be aware of, et cetera. So Donna, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that particular line item.
He's really valuable to the town. He, last year we asked for 5,000. This year we're only asking for a mere 2,000. This year, we will manage, and helped us a lot with COVID and getting us, he, he works with schools on a regular basis. He's a retired, you know, head of maintenance for schools. So he knew what to do. He went around and trained our depart, our department buildings on how to do it. And so we will transfer some of his costs to the CARES, which will enable us to get through this year. So I don't want you to think that, I mean, his costs aren't, are good and they're valuable. He has rolled out, helping the library who goes and puts tasks in and is using the Facility Dude program, and he is rolling it out to the police department as we speak. And he will roll it out to DPW and to the fire station. And what that does is that they write that they have a leaky faucet. He goes in and he calls the plumber. They don't have to, it's off of their plate. It's, Laura loves it. She just writes in what's going on. And Paul comes in and he gets the contractor in. We're trying to use one contractor throughout the whole town so that consistency is there for who we're using. And he has set all that up. It also is preventive maintenance. If we're supposed to do something, it pops up on Facility Dude and he writes to the building and says, it's time for this guy to come in. He schedules it. They come in and he tells them that, you know, the department had that, they're going to show up at such and such a time. So it does help the, the department heads that are running those buildings a tremendous, a lot. And a lot of the burden of these facility things that we're, none of us are really trained on, is now being handled by somebody that is trained on this type of work. And the work is being done on a more regular basis, is being done by consistency throughout the town. And I don't know. I mean, I could go on forever, but he's worth his weight in gold.
Donna, one of the, the benefits of Paul was that by having a list of go-to plumbers, electricians, et cetera, and consistency, we're giving them more work. We probably can get a better rate for the time that they come out. Are we seeing a decrease in the bills that are coming in for the maintenance?
I can't say that. I mean, I think it's just that they will, they, they know that there will be consistency, though they come faster. But I, I'm not aware, I mean, cost, I'm sure that it is, but I.
Because that was one of the big selling points, that we're paying higher than usual rates because the people who are reaching out to these vendors don't necessarily do that for a living, and they don't know what they're getting. They may be paying more. So that was one of the big selling points. It sounds like he's wonderful, but that was a benefit that we said we thought we would see.
And his consistency of using one, one plumber is that one building isn't using one contractor that may be costing more, that we are using ones that are more consistent and are cheap, not cheaper, but more value and, you know, more value for what you're getting. Lowering cost and going across the board, everybody's using the same one. Or he's calling on the same one. Yes, Kevin?
From a rate standpoint, if, if, you know, they're setting a rate from an hourly standpoint, to Donna's point, I'm not sure if we've necessarily seen that yet. But I know that him identifying, helping us with scope of work on particular projects has helped us, I don't want to say necessarily value engineer projects, but at least make sure our scope is, is tight. I don't wanna say necessarily value engineer projects, but at least make sure our scope is, is tight, um, and, and what's needed. And um, he's been having relationships with people in the industry. You know, he, he's able to kind of work those numbers as well for us, uh, when those numbers come in. I know he's, he, we've had him go back. And asking to sharpen the pencils before.
You've had him go back and do what?
Sharpen the pencils, uh, sharpen the pencil.
The vendors. Could Paul give us though, um, twenty-five thousand, a bunch of money? Can he give us a, a sense though, perhaps uh. At a high level, places where we have actually saved some money that he can suggest. I don't want to spend, him spending a lot of time. But it'd be awful nice to be able to see a list of, well, we, we, you, you save this much here, you save this much here. Actually, uh, yes, your plumbing was this much uh, last year, but. The average uh, cost was uh, this much for plumbers, but now we're doing just that one plumber for both, for all of the. Buildings in the town and that company has given us a better deal. I- if he could just maybe summarize some stuff without spending a lot of time. It might be helpful going forward to feel more comfortable with the twenty-five. We do have to admit though, that he's doing two things. He's also still doing this dude, facility dude implementation. Uh, which apparently takes some time, but that's a one-time thing to get it in place. To use it is an ongoing thing, but uh, he's mo- he's moving along pretty well on that.
Yes.
What you said.
I, I can ask him if he's, what savings he has seen with other vendors, with the vendors that he worked.
Just a sense of, of what it might be, it would be helpful. But then uh, lastly, back to the facility dude. Is, is, in the coming year, will he finish all the departments with facility dude setup?
So uh, he's moving out, he's moving it into the police department, um, I don't know, you know.
Mentioned, yes. Do we have a sense that he's trying to get them all done in the coming year?
Yep, I mean, he, yes. Like to get them done as quickly as possible.
If you would, the following year, he, if, and we still have twenty-five thousand, he have more money to spend on helping us use facility do. And maybe finding additional ways to save some money on, okay, great. Yeah, uh, but I, we all appreciate, especially this year, the need for uh, ventilation and uh, with COVID. And, and his help in that, in that regard especially.
Okay, next.
So then the next item is um. Is one we, we're, we're excited about. Um, we're, we're estimating that we'll see a, a potential savings of around six thousand dollars. Due to the new phones annually. And that's, again, kudos to Donna for the work she did on that. We have, we reduced fifty-four hundred of it out of there, being conservative in the budget. Instead of dropping that too low, we, we did that, but um, we, we feel strongly, probably be closer to six thousand dollars when it's all said and done. If not, great.
Great.
The PEG money is one which.
Can you help me on that? It, it went down.
No, it's a combination of two things.
It's a combination of the, that line item reduction represents multiple, or that line item represents multiple. Actual costs that are incurred. Two of the items have been reduced out of that. One is um. Fifty-four hundred dollars in the new phone savings.
Oh, I see, okay.
So there's a PEG expense, um, that's related to uh, Verizon, which was being paid out of that line item. We've moved it down into the PEG um, as well. So um, it's, it's represented in another place, but it's reduced that line item.
We have six hundred and ninety to go and the rest of them were just a realignment of accounts. And then we'd be able to wrap up, not pushing it, but we've got an executive session.
Yes, so um, the postage meter ran out on its lease and it's a new lease, so it's a contracted um, expense, uh, it's more money. Buy six hundred and ninety a year. That's it.
Okay, so the net is down almost eight percent.
Now, some of that though is. Reallocating the, the other places. The big, the big expenditure is gonna be that twenty thousand though, that, that's the electricity, obviously. But we did, we did try to find places to save within there to offset some of that. Then um, town-owned buildings, uh, that's just keeping the lights on when necessary over at the, the, the former uh, garage. And then cable advisory, the five thousand dollars is a stipend for um. One of our staff who maintains the website, updates the news, post meetings, et cetera. That person was looking for uh, an increase, but we left it level funded this year. I'm hopeful that won't change that person's pers- per uh. I'm hopeful that that, that wiki maintained that person in the position at the rate we're at. And then, Don, do you wanna, there was a lot of moving pieces. I know you and I talked about this, but I know you submitted the final one, so maybe if you wanted to just. Talk about the different moving pieces on there?
The peg cable, we're moving the, um, we're just making everything that is peg or to cable or website. Into this budget and not be carried into the town hall budget, which it has been, website, software, Civic Plus for thirty-two fifty. The legal fees, we figured we could get rid of that and then Boxford Cable, um, access that, just the. Reducing it by twenty-five hundred shows a more accurate of what is being charged, what we're paying. And the cable um, expense is um. Web is the maintenance for that, forget it, um, anyway.
The um, I, the one thing I'll mention is, is that number's increased obviously from what it was last year. By about five thousand dollars and one of, it's, there's some strategic, it's a little strategic to do so in that. I'm gonna use this number during the negotiations with the uh, the incumbents to represent what our actual costs are. For instance, the website, um, we post all our meetings there. That's a place where the, the public access. Component goes to, so I'll make the argument, that's why the website's being funded through there, which is often being funded by the, the Verizon and Comcast. Uh, if we can be successful in that during the negotiation.
Okay, any questions, anyone on the PEG category?
The only other really increase is for the holiday on the green and that is just to annually support. As you all know, support that effort, um, as small as it is up in the annual holiday on the green or whatever you wanna call it. That event that happens in December.
So we put a, a, an ask just to put in there to have the discussion if, if, if it's the desire of the FinCom and the community to move forward with, and the board obviously. To have a contribution towards the event. It, it's there for discussion purposes. Did we wanna go, I know it wasn't on the list that Debbie distributed, but do we, we wanna cover the Selectment Department as well?
Um, we've got a couple of other meetings if you wanna push that off. I don't know how people are feeling. It's quarter of seven and we probably have a half hour executive session meeting and the school committee meeting, um. Or the Masco meeting starts at seven, for anyone who wants to tune into that one.
So on the um, executive session, we, we can postpone going in. There's not much to update since the last conversation. I'm still waiting for that, for that water MOA, uh, revision back from the, the other side and I have not heard back from the reserve police.
Oh, okay.
More updates than decisions.
It, and really, there hasn't been any discussions since last week with the groups.
Executive session ever.
You did not do an executive session, okay?
No, no, we did not, that is.
Clear about that. So I just wanted to, the um, insurance, I just wanted to say that. Maya has said that we're level funded, we have a contract with them to be level funded for our workman's comp and our property and liability. However, the, and this, I'm going to um, unclassified insurance nine sixteen, line nine sixteen. Um, but the accident in Chub, which um, ensures our police department, they um. Trish has said to up it to ten percent, they really won't know until March or April on that. Um, and it, uh, so she suggests going up ten percent at this point for that. So the insurance is only basically up that much, ten percent, which is a lot, but. The other two, property and liability and workman's comp are, are level funded.
And the reason on the police is because of the latest legislation reference to police and the liabilities that go along with that potentially?
Didn't give us that, I don't think.
They just say you can, you can put in as a fair statement right now, ten percent, we'll let you know in March or April if that changes. As, as they've done in the past.
The good news is it's ten percent on a smaller, uh, one of the smaller categories, so.
If you'd like, I, I think I could probably handle the select board uh, pretty quickly.
If we don't have executive session, we have a few extra minutes. Donna, thank you very much. I didn't mean to short shift you there. At the end, it's getting a little long, the meeting one, so.
Oh, that's fine. I just wanted to get the insurance because that is a piece of what we figured out.
Thank you.
Mentioned it, Donna. Um, so salary wages. My salary, Donna's salary, mine's contractual, two percent for the, on the grid for Donna. Debbie, two percent on hers as well. And then, what we did here is, we, we put this in last year. Similar conversation to, um, was brought up around the minute taker for um, the Board of Health meetings. Right now, we have money in there for, for support of um, Debbie's efforts. But we've had a lot of meetings and, and I know that um, we've had conversations. Um, Madam Chair about trying to leverage some dis- that external support to try to help. Make the, pull the meetings, the minutes together, um, in quicker, in, in a good amount of time in a turnaround purpose. This is the same as last year, it's, it's um, and it, and it represents allowing us some additional coverage um, for that. And, and a monetary value associated with it. Not just comp time. To offset what those hours are being worked. And then going down to postage, um, that was reduced by um, a thousand dollars. I'm sorry, annual town warrant um, was reduced by a thousand dollars. And then increased by a thousand dollars was uh, dues, publication and memberships, to better align what the actual costs are for those accounts.
Kevin, in the travel and training, have we traditionally run five thousand or fifty-one hundred a year? Because I, obviously this year is different, there's only fifty dollars that have been spent.
I did not go to the conference last year, um, the I, ICMA. And so this year I don't know how to plan to do so either because of COVID, um, which is one of the larger expenditures. Around that, um, you could see in fiscal nineteen, it was pretty close to what the dollars were. And I, I know that when, last year I was pulled, we did the budget based on my contracts. The, some of the requirements I have in there for training purposes and for travel, uh, some of the memberships. Did an analysis of what those costs for, for the travel would be, the cost for the memberships would be, et cetera, uh, to get a better handle on what that would be. And then we broke that out into the two cate- uh, two different categories, uh, between dues, publications and memberships and the travel, training and uh, conferences.
Okay, thank you.
And then Selectment Special Level Funded, um, our legal expenses this year to date, they're always a couple of months in the rears. But um, we, we try to be very thoughtful in, in, on that front, uh, but not foolish in not using them. Um, they've been a good, great support to us on a number of fronts, a number of things you're all aware of that we've been dealing with this year. And so that number will increase, um, to, how much to be determined.
Does that look really large? Is that consistent fifty-five thousand when we're running at sixty-six? Even if it triples?
I've done, I, they gave me a little bit of a discount my first year, to be frank. They, they told me that. They said, we're gonna, we'll help you out in the first year. And I think so, the um, not that I asked for it, but they offered, I took advantage, right? So um, I think that, there's a few of the calls I make, they probably not clicking the clock when I, when I pick up the phone. And I think that the um. There's, it's been pretty, um, there's a couple of things that we're working on right now that I think. We're gonna see some increases on those legal lines, including, that's where I anticipate we'll actually put our, uh, our monies that are spent. Uh, during the cable uh, negotiations, which we haven't really kicked off at this point. We have, but we haven't, we haven't used the legal side of it except for two meetings at this point. So I don't know where that'll come out, but I know I'm trying to be very thoughtful on that and, but I do, it is a nice safety blanket if there's uh, an issue here or there that pops up. That, as we all know, do pop up, um, and have popped up.
And do we anticipate anything in particular for the professional services? I know we've used them before for hiring, but. Is that twenty thousand based upon some projected?
I anticipate that we'll, we'll use that for um, the survey of the highway building, which could be seventy-five hundred plus. I also anticipate the four to sev- four to six thou- four to five thousand dollar cost for the salary survey. If we end up uh, fitting, taking care of the whole bill, would come out of that line item as well. And so then we're getting, we're at that point getting pretty close to um, to our twenty thousand.
That was seven and five is twelve and a half out of twenty.
And we've spent three thousand to date, so we're fifteen and then there, I, we're six months into the year, there might be additional, yes Donna?
I know, there is also, it's, there's also expenses on an annual basis that are out of that. We pay Beth uh, for the annual report and for our unemployment.
So there are. Talking about next year, I'm sorry.
Well, those are annual costs that we have every.
Thought it, the numbers were for next year.
Yeah, so I think if we look at what we've incurred to date in that category and then double it, because we're only halfway through. We annually spend about six thousand in a variety of miscellaneous, it looks like, for.
So if you take that three thousand, you add on to it the four thousand dollars for the salary survey, so you're at seven thousand dollars.
Those were two specific projects, so a- apart from the specific projects that we know you're going to do. This looks like in this year, just regular ongoing annual that falls into that bucket. So you've got your forty-five hundred for the salary survey, the seventy-five hundred, or uh, the seventy-five hundred for the DPW survey. And then about six thousand in annual expenses, so added together, that brings you up to the twenty thousand. Is that right, Tom?
Right, and so like, for instance, last year, Robin spent, I think, ten thousand dollars on the HR study. Which was something that, that was available so they could, we, they could, you all could move forward on that, um, and have an item aligned that you could tap into to use. Yep, that's right.
Professional services is always something you really don't know, you don't plan. I mean, we had to get a new town administrator that wasn't planned, so that wasn't budgeted. That came out of professional services because we had the funds. I wouldn't, you know, in the past, we've been able to live within our means of twenty thousand dollars. I believe that that will be what we can do in fiscal twenty-two.
Yeah, there's, oh, there's things that just come up sometimes, there's some kind of study on stormwater or something or something. We need to have money in there.
Oh yeah, you definitely don't take. You don't spend it frivolously, it's just that things have to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I think that wraps up um, today's budget meeting, if, if ever, unless there's any other questions.
I don't have any, anyone else?
Me.
We really have to go through the warrant article, so. Uh, we, we need to, we need to, uh, I'm not, I'm not talking about now, we, we, we need to get through these warrant articles.
So we have three more sessions, do we? Work sessions, meetings?
Two more, two more.
Well, two more this month, yeah, the, the next two Thursday. So from a, a stand, us. Where we are with this, so um, I've put this list into, but I didn't share it with you because I was working on it. And I didn't have a chance to, to double check my work and I didn't want to send something to you without it being accurate. But basically, I, I have the list of warrant articles for the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting. It lists that the articles that are, article one, two, three, four, five, six goes into the uh, annual.
No, I, I'm just referring to the, the, the draft warrant articles of these extra ones. I'm not talking about the, the, we do, we do have to do that. But we have this list of seventeen of them, a few of which we discussed today. But we need this, we need to discuss these and clear out the ones that are not gonna make it. So that we don't keep talking about things that don't belong there in the first place.
I, I just, I'd, I'd like to add a little bit to that, Dick, uh, if you don't mind. Uh, I look up on this list uh, as a, uh, e- everything on that list is a space saver. For inclusion in the later warrant. I will tell you that there are several in there that I would suggest we throw out, uh, but I'm willing to debate that more. Uh, because uh, that's what it. that more because that's what, that's what that list is for, is to give us some point of discussion. But there's some that I think that are not going to make the cut. And, and I'm sure you're trying to make that list as complete as you can, Kevin. But, but, but there's, there'll be some that won't make the cut.
Are there any? Sorry.
That's okay. I was just gonna say, we have 14 on here. We went through three today. So we have 11 more that we want to discuss and we have two more work sessions.
Yeah.
But we also have the other budget items to go through. The department heads coming in. So is it realistic to think that we can get through, you know, five or six in each of those two meetings? Do we need another meeting? Do we need to talk about it at the 25th meeting?
My suggestion is we schedule something and hopefully cancel it. But it's always better to have one scheduled that we can cancel.
I agree. We can always do that. Sure.
Is there any on this list? I think everyone's had a chance to look at the 14 that, that's the latest version. I know we were out at Coppermine, for instance, yesterday, and that was one that was a placeholder for the moment. And there was some feedback and maybe some direction that came out of that. You know, the light, the light pole easements, that's, that's not a, it's taking four existing license agreements for where we're putting the lights and making them permanent easements. And even if we weren't able to get to that one, this, this, this town meeting, we could go to the next town meeting on that. You know, the economic development planner, it's, we built it in on the operating budget as an over asking, so it's already under raised and appropriate there. But I know last year, we discussed having it as an article standalone. So that's something we can bring up at a later date. The MS4, I'm not sure if that's going to get on this one or not. There's, I have to have a conversation with, with, with Dave Bond. He was going to get, do some research onto it and then get back to me. If there is a need for it, Heidi Gap, need from Concomit, flag that as something we might want to consider.
You haven't listed against Plan Board. So you didn't mean that. The, the quester, the quester is, is Dave Bond essentially?
Dave Bond needs to talk with Martha Morrison on it because ultimately it would go back to a bylaw.
Okay. Interestingly enough, I can appreciate that, but I haven't heard Planning Board talk about it at all. Not that I've, they haven't, but I haven't heard him talk about it.
So it's, it's a very, that's one that's like, it was mentioned, I asked the department heads to tell me what they thought we should consider. And that was one that was flagged by one who's not immediately directed, is aware of MS4, but not necessarily responsible for MS4. So now I gave it to the person who ultimately is responsible to, to bring this. And they said they wanted to bring this to the planning because planning would have a place in this as well. So there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this one. It just needs to see if, if there's things that are actually needed in it or not. That's why it's, it's on the list. But it's a very good chance that might come off as well.
As Boyd said, there's a lot of things on the list and they, somebody put them on, that's fine. But we need to work on them so we can clean up the ones that aren't going to be there and understand the ones that we're going to keep.
And then in addition, there's the actual wording. So after the words are actually developed, then we sit down to go through and see if there's any, you know, adjustments in the actual wording of the warrant. So.
Right.
Yeah, that's near the end. The first thing is to understand, for example, I don't know what marijuana bylaw is from the police chief. I gotta, I have to understand what that is at some point. So I can do some research, understand what it represents. And then we have to decide whether we want to, or why he's asking for it. All of that stuff that goes on, such as that.
Well, do we want to put one additional meeting on? Just considering how long today's meeting went with the department heads and talking about three of the items, we still have 11 of these items to go. And even if some of them are lighter discussion.
Yeah, but the department head meetings for the next two work sessions are significantly shorter than what we did today.
They're big departments too, though.
They're, they're big departments, there's no question.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there. If you think we can get through it, I think these are going to be long meetings. They're going to be.
Oh, I think we ought to have another meeting. I think we ought to schedule.
Kevin, you seem hesitant. Do you?
No, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at the schedule. I'm just seeing what we have. And it is, they, they were, we purposely kind of tried to balance them. So there would be some balance to it. We, yeah, we could certainly have a standalone warrant discussion meeting where we kind of go, we go through. Or we could start one of the meetings in the agenda. It's maybe next Thursday, we start the meeting with the warrant rather than going through the budgets and then see how far we get on that. But I don't, how, how long do you folks, and I know we went through it last year together, but you might have a better feel of how much time you want to spend on that list to get to a place where we might be able to get some real language behind and, and move it to the next, to the next level.
It depends upon how much data you have, how much information you have against these things. I think that's a big deal. If, if all the work has been done and it's very clear, you can send some stuff out to us, you know, this, 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 and this, so we understand what it is, we may be able to make it through faster. But you've got to be, you know, the idea of lots of answers, real quick as to why and why not.
I mean, I would ask, do you have a couple sentences that you can send us on what these things mean? Because right now, we literally have a title. Like, I don't know what sign ordinance update. To Dick's point, I don't know what marijuana, marijuana bylaw. But if you can give me two sentences, are we outlawing it? Are we legalizing it? Are we restricting it? You know, just a basic theme of what these things mean.
So in reference to, to having this at a meeting, in, with respect to the, in respecting the resident, the employees, I would say it's better that we have them scheduled at four, at four o'clock when we start the meeting, so that we don't start into this list and they have to wait around until we get around to the list. That's, it's a suggestion on my part. That's my suggestion. Or schedule a separate meeting, just to get into this list and go through all of the things if you think you're ready to talk about all of them. Or even in the case of some of the things on here, maybe the police chief would want to come in and explain the bylaw if, if you don't have all the data on it or why he was thinking. It's up to you.
I mean, I was just going to suggest in terms of scheduling another meeting is let's see where we are after a meeting a week from now. And then we'd have time to, to better assess, do we need another meeting for that? Because we're not going to schedule a meeting between now and that one. And so maybe after next week's meeting, you know, this time next week, we'll see if we feel like we need another one.
And I can, I can do some more, put a little more depth to the, to the titles and distribute that to the, to you folks to have ahead of the next meeting as well, to give a little more depth to it. But I, I do think, part of my expectation was to have, to make sure the department heads who requested these, such as the marijuana bylaw, to actually speak to it directly, because they'll be able to answer on, in real time, most if not all your questions. Whereas I think some of the specifics you might ask me, I have a good handle on all these, but some of the very specific, you know, occupational questions, I'd have to go back and get those answers from. So if we did schedule a special meeting to talk about this, I'd make sure that the department heads were present to talk about it. Sort of like, the chair and I talked about this actually ahead of the meeting to make sure that we had Wendy, who was at the meeting today, and, gosh, what's the other one? It's starting to get late. Three hours.
Catherine.
Catherine, thank you. We had, had, had everybody, and Beth and Wendy, thank you. Beth and Wendy at present so that when they talked about their budget, they could talk about that and kind of get both those out at the same time to try to avoid them having to come back. But we could certainly put something on the books and have the half a dozen department heads, this is relevant to, to be present at it.
Kevin, who's up for the next one? I'm just looking to see what we have for warrants and who's coming in to speak on their budget. Is there a couple of big ticket items here with police chief, water, building?
I can tell you who's, I can tell you who's on the next list of department heads to talk about their budget.
Yeah. Who's that, Boyd?
Planning and zoning, Barbara, Donna Rich.
Yep.
Inspection services, Glenn Closey. Highway, snow and ice, parks and cemeteries and recreation, Gary Wilds. Water department, Greg Crum. Stormwater and tree warden, Kevin.
That's a big meeting.
It is a big meeting with a number of warrants too. We've got number three, number four.
Do you want to try to do a, a work session? I'm, I'm trying to be sensitive too, to the team's time. If we did one, and also Marshall, your time, is there any flexibility to do one during, say, regular, earlier than a four o'clock on any of those days for the warrant purposes?
Maybe on the ones that involve you, Kevin, the town administrator, so we're not pulling in the other people too. Because is that streetlight purchase, the old highway garage, the light pole easement, copper mine, economic development, those don't take other department heads?
True.
And yes, I mean, I can, you, you, Kevin, have seen me attend meetings from my desk at work. So as long as I put myself on mute and occasionally ignore you all completely, yes, I can do, I can do that.
Like a regular meeting, Marshall?
Come on now.
I'm teasing.
So maybe.
Or we can do it at two, maybe do it at two, two o'clock someday.
Yeah. And, and as soon as we have a chance to get through these, that's going to give us the opportunity to get, I'll start, I can, I'll start working on the language. I can give some bullets, like Marshall had suggested, on this for you to review in the interim, just so you have a little more familiarity.
I mean, literally one sentence that just tells us what it means.
Like the, like the streetlight purchase.
I mean, presumably, the marijuana bylaw seeks to establish something, right? So one sentence could probably tell us what that is.
A local fine associated with being with open container, basically.
Yeah. See, so that already, we know more than we did 10 seconds ago.
Do you want to take a stab at that, setting up that meeting now that we're all here? Or do you need to go back, Kevin, and look at your schedule and send something out to us?
Let, do, how, how, would it be okay if we put something tentatively on the books and then I can reach out to make sure department heads are available that day?
And I will just say that if it's a workday, for me, one o'clock is actually better than two o'clock. There's a lull kind of in the middle of my day and at two o'clock, things start to amp up. It's okay for me.
Would, would one o'clock on the 20th, as a, again, penciling that in, oh, actually, we have Topsfield Housing.
I was just going to say, isn't that inauguration day, which is only notable because in a newsroom, that's probably going to be a little busy.
Yeah, we won't do. Um, let's see, maybe one o'clock then on, on Tuesday?
Yep.
That's fine for me.
All right. I'll, we'll send an, I'll send an email out to, to the department, relevant department heads and see if that's the time that works for people.
Is that the 20th?
It's the 19th.
Okay.
A week from yesterday. Oh, no, from two days ago. Whoop, whoop, Tuesday, a week, five days.
I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking from a posting standpoint, though.
We have plenty of time. If we post tomorrow, and in the morning, and that's by Tuesday morning is two days, so we're good.
Monday's a holiday.
With Monday being a holiday.
Don't yell at me.
Can we post tonight?
No, I don't have a town clerk.
You know where she lives, Donna?
I would work tonight.
How about, how about Wednesday at one o'clock?
We can't.
What?
Marshall has to like do the news that day.
That's, that's inauguration day, Boyd, which.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
See a slight uptick in work for me on a, in a. I understand. I understand. Just a slight.
Thursday is actually the MMA conference. I don't know if anyone, if any of you.
That's a problem, yeah, right. We actually, our four o'clock thing bumps into it. It ends at five, but I figured we could skip out on whatever it was.
I was kind of being silly, Donna, but do, do you think Beth would ever post from home? Just to quickly?
So.
You can't?
Posted outside the building.
Well, I mean, there's.
He said, if, I mean, if she, if she just drew it up, I could put it down in the folder. I'll hang around.
What is going to, so, what is on the agenda? A warrant, articles.
Just warrant. Does she have to set up the Zoom, put warrant, change the dates, time, and send it over to me and I can put it out in the folder downstairs? She'll, I know, I'll, I'll.
Debbie.
Well, Debbie's off, Debbie's off. I'm not, Debbie's on the kid.
Hey, guys, I don't, I don't think you need to turn yourselves inside out over this.
Well, if we want to do something next week, that's the only time, because Monday's a holiday, Wednesday's inauguration, Thursday is MMA.
But since we already have these meetings scheduled, I mean, is there any advantage to doing it next Tuesday versus a week from next Tuesday? It still fits in our schedule of looking at everything, right? Because we're, we're meeting again next week and then we're meeting again the week after that. So what is the advantage of doing it next Tuesday versus a week from next Tuesday?
So 26 is what you're suggesting?
I don't have a calendar in front of me, Kevin, so.
You're saying that week. That's the, yeah, I'm with you.
I don't see, I don't see how we can do it Tuesday, because.
We're, we're, we're moving, Kevin, today, next Tuesday, when we're really in a two week period right now of looking at all of this. So why does it have to be next week versus the week after? Because we'd still be in the window where we're already planning to be discussing this stuff.
And we'll have it, if we, if time allows, we can still ask a couple of the department heads, maybe we could chip away at a couple of them during the next, next Thursday's work session as well.
Which was again, going back to what I said a while ago, if we see where we are one week from now, we'll have a better idea if we need to add this extra meeting.
Does that pose any problem, Kevin, having it crunched into the last week for you?
We'll get it done. We'll figure it out. Yeah, we'll make it happen.
Does it?
We could make it the 20. The, the, the idea is, as Marshall suggested, make it essentially the following, we make it one o'clock on the 26th. Is that available to anybody?
Yep, it's fine for me.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Tuesday.
What day is that?
Tuesday.
I can do that.
Is that okay for you, Kevin?
Yeah. And it's far enough out where I think I, it's a little less pressure for department heads to be able to make it as well.
Tentatively, one o'clock, Tuesday, the 26th.
Marshall, yep, that works for me. I don't think anyone's getting inaugurated that day.
Anything else that you need to cover, Kevin, or anyone else before we wrap?
Dick, we can, we can.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Roll call. Boyd?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
Marshall?
Hi.
Lynn is I. It passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, so much.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye, guys.
Good job.